All right. Okay, I will go ahead and call this school board workshop to order. And it looks like I see, well, let's do a roll call for everyone on the board who is present. So Arlen.
Here.
And then I got Jamie.
Present.
Colin.
Present.
Heidi.
Present.
Jim.
Here.
Hi, Karsten is here.
Did you Mike?
Mike is here.
Okay.
Giving me the thumbs up and the chair is here, so I will call the meeting to order. Are you going to share the the flag Lisa, so we can say the pledge of allegiance?
Yep, there you go.
Do you see it?
Yeah, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic.
For which is fair. One nation.
For God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all. Thank you. I do not have our vision statement in front of us. All right, well, we'll just go ahead and move forward to the meeting agenda. We have special education programming, so we asked some folks to join us from Futures. Who will be presenting and giving us their final analysis of what they've come up with in their research. And then the second part of our meeting this evening will be talking about our human resources plan. The agenda is listed on the school board website and we'll go ahead and get started. And I will turn it over to Karsten and your folks from Futures who are joining us on this call this evening. So thank you, and I'll go ahead and mute myself out.
Thank you Pam. I'll introduce all three gentlemen who are working with Futures. First, we have Charlie Kite. He was a superintendent in Northfield for several years and then also the executive director for the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. A very highly thought of educator and entrepreneur. He does a lot of different projects in his retirement. So I think all of us see him more than we ever did before. But he's really our link with Futures Incorporated. And the two Futures individuals here are Michael Neiman and John McGuire. And I'm going to essentially turn it over to them, but I will say in advance that I've been incredibly impressed with how they structure their analyses, some of their conversations that they've had. It's just been real top notch and their pleasure to work with. They will talk about the good, the bad, and how we can improve and we'll turn it over to their group.
Okay, and I'll, I think I'll start. Can you all hear me? This is Charlie Kite.
We can.
Okay. First of all, thank you Karsten for the introduction and thank you to the board for having the time to listen to us tonight. We began this project in November of last year. John McGuire and Michael Neiman and I spent a couple of days in the district interviewing a lot of people. And maybe I should say this. Michael is, has a PhD. He's a special education practice leader for Futures Education. He works all over the United States, helping to analyze special ed programs and working to improve them. And John McGuire, longtime superintendent and a longtime special education administrator, more on the east coast, working with all sizes of districts, large to small. He's worked extensively with districts that also have a relationship with co-op. So he's very knowledgeable about that. So anyway, we, we were in the district last fall, late fall, early winter. We then spent January and February doing an analysis, constantly asking for more information from Jackie in the business office and from your special ed people and so forth. And then in March, we drafted a report, honed it to try to get it to say simply what we felt about the Red Wing District, many of the things being very, very positive and some as usual that can be improved. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael first of all, and then to John. They're going to work their way through the report, give you a little of the background, but then ultimately really spend the majority of the time on the recommendations that we've formulated. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Okay, thank you Charlie, I appreciate that. And Lisa, I think we're ready for the screen share if we can call up the PowerPoint. Very good. This is great. And the team and I just want to thank Lisa. We got on early to do our homework and make sure we were set up and it worked like a charm. So Lisa, thank you for that. We also want to acknowledge and thank the district folks that helped us. Dr. Kite had mentioned are reaching out. It's very data rich, as you see, special ed is somewhat a moving target because what's true today might not be true tomorrow in terms of numbers and policies and things like that. Dr. Kite and John actually did the majority of the walkthroughs. I visited the Colville Family Center. But it was actually Charlie and John, and I think I can speak for both of you how professional and how forthcoming everyone was. People in central office, we really can't do this report without the cooperation of everyone involved. I did want to acknowledge just the professionalism of everyone from the district. So Lisa, if we can scroll down just a little bit to the next slide, thank you. So again, you can see as Dr. Kite had mentioned, the three of us formed the core, but behind the scenes, there was a lot of, too many people to mention in the Futures Office that produced this final report, do it, did all the data analysis, helped with the IEP reviews. So I want to acknowledge their, their, their good work as well. So we can move to the next slide, please. So the purpose of this presentation are sort of fivefold. It's to review the methodology of the study. One of the board members had mentioned sort of this research and that's how we see it, almost as a research study, the, the subject being the district. So it needs to feel like a research project in the sense that how we go about it, methodology, the research design really needs to make sense in order to support the findings. Present pertinent information for contextual purposes. And we're going to kind of step through some of those contextual things like what is special ed? How do we see the continuum of supports? And this idea that special ed is not a silo, it does not exist as the separate entity. It's just one more tool in the toolbox to support struggling learners. So we're going to kind of talk about that introduction because that's really going to create the framework for the findings. And then we will talk about the findings, provide corresponding areas of opportunity or recommendations, provide a forum for discussion. Our team would welcome any questions from the board throughout while it's fresh in your mind. With that said, at the very end, we do have a question and answer section. So we welcome any questions from the board. We'll take as much time as we need to step through that. Yes, Lisa, thank you. We're good for that slide. So the specific areas under review when we created a partnership with the district and leadership said these six things are of particular import for us. They incorporate those six things. I won't go through them verbatim, but you can see they span sort of programmatic areas as well as organizational areas. They span staff capacity issues and MTSS, basically your early intervening services to support struggling learners, not special education. And we'll talk about that. So it's really a very broad and comprehensive look at the, at the departments. We can move to the next slide, please Lisa. So we organized this presentation really as an analog for the report. When we take those six areas and we thought, how can we present them in the most straightforward manner? They fall nicely into two constructs or areas. One is organizational considerations with the climate and culture. We look at staffing, we look at professional development. Those are things that the organization, the special ed department really needs to, to thrive, basically. And then we, the second part is the continuum of supports, all the way from MTSS or early intervening processes to your most, your students with your most severe needs that might need placement at the cooperative. So those are the two areas that we talked about tonight. And in turn, we'll talk about each of those areas with respect to findings and areas of opportunity. In terms of the methodology, well, how did we arrive at these findings? There was qualitative and quantitative components. The interviews, we interviewed 56 district staff ranging from central office leadership, school-based administration, special ed teachers, general ed teachers, non-certified instructional staff and related service providers. All the questions were confidential and catered to the interviews or the interviewees, particular areas of background expertise. So there was some overlapping questions after Dr. Kite and John had introduced themselves to the interviews. The first thing they said was everything you say here stays here. You don't see in the report, there was never attribution. We took great care, not to attribute any quote to any particular person. The second thing they asked of everybody was climate and culture. Our students with special education needs, are they your students? Are they those students? Is there any degree of separation or are they owned by the school? Are all kids included, basically? So that was a question that was asked of all, all employees, whether it was a par educator or a teacher or a principal, that was the first question asked of everybody. But then there were some questions that we asked that were germane just to people we spoke to. So I interviewed people at the preschool. So the questions I had asked were really specific to, let's say, transition from birth to three or early intervention. When John and Dr. Kite talked to special ed teachers, they asked about things like co-teaching and continuum of, of supports. What does the model look like? Because that was their background. So there was some overlap and then there were some very distinct questions we asked. Nonevaluated site visits to all the district schools, including the Tower View Alternative Program, which John had visited. And I had mentioned the Colville Family Center because it was important for us to get that sense of how are all students supported? These are nonevaluated. We didn't walk in there with clipboards. We don't own clipboards. But if we did, we still wouldn't have them because we didn't want staff to think that we're evaluating them. That was not the point of our site visits. It was to understand the context in the, the delivery of services for students with disabilities at the different schools. And the comparative analyses to other county school districts in Good, Goodview and Minnesota. So you'll see it was very data rich and we'll try to break those, those charts down in the report. And then document reviews, we did a stratified random review of IEPs, policies and procedures, organizational charts, things like that. Talked about part of our purpose tonight is to provide, as part of the workshop, a sort of a background of special education in the lens that we see special education. This is not to presume that the district doesn't or the leadership doesn't, but it's really helpful to talk about these things. That we talked about special ed is just another tool in the toolbox. It doesn't exist as a separate entity. It's just one more support system for students that might be struggling. So if you think about this continuum, all the way from tiered one supports, from tiered oneers are basically best practices that support all, all students from ELA, English Language Arts, to math, to behavior, all the way to special ed. So again, the way we present our program review is it's, yes, it's about special ed, but it's something about really that, that continuum. And then educational environment from general ed to out of district or at the cooperative. When we think about what makes an effective special education program? In the final analysis, it's this chart. It's a program that meets the students' needs in terms of horizontal articulation because special ed, again, we said it's not, it's not a silo. It's a service to help students with special needs meet the same expectations as students without IEPs. So it's meaningful inclusion opportunities like unified sports for older students. It's best buddies. It's lunch with typical students. And it's also, I'm helping those students achieve grade level expectations. And we talk about outcomes. There's some real celebrations there for the district in terms of how they are helping students with disabilities achieve those expectations. We talked about MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports. Again, it's, the board might have seen this pyramid before, but it's, it's a good graphic to kind of think about what it's meant to do. The pyramid at its base is meant to meet all students and the students need more and more intensive tiered interventions against more specific and more time intensive. But again, the important thing to remember is that MTSS exists as a general education initiative. It's not special education and it's not meant to be a pass through. We love our acronyms and our terminology in special education. So you'll see in the report, in the introductory pages, we've got this glossary of terms. And when John, Dr. Kite and I present, we'll try to spell these out, but if we slip into our, our acronyms, advanced apologies, this is where you can, this is where you can find out what we're talking about if we slip up.
Okay, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me add my thanks to that of my colleagues. We very much appreciate the opportunity to partner with the Red Wing Schools and to have this opportunity to be with you this evening. And I also wanted to just note, like Michael was saying, the cooperation and support that we experienced as a team and as individuals throughout our work in the district was just magnificent. People were very professional, very forthcoming and very helpful. They were very invested in the analysis and of course, that makes our work possible. So thank you. So let's talk about some of the findings under the area of organizational consideration. This is, this is the quantitative component of our work. As you all know, education is a people-intensive enterprise and everything that goes on in our schools happens in a people context. So we try to understand the culture and by going through the interview processes, we learn a great deal about the school district. So the first thing, as Michael had said, that we look at is what we refer to as ownership in each school and district wide. And what we mean by that very simply is to what extent do all of the adults in the system see students with disabilities as their students? Special ed, as we all know, began as a separate and segregated enterprise. And over the years, we've learned that integration and inclusion and collaboration across specialists and generalists is the most effective way to serve all of our students. So what did we learn through our interviews? The perception of the people that we interviewed was that the district has excellent examples of ownership on the part of, for example, general education teachers, but has not yet attained what we would call a pervasive climate or a pervasive culture of ownership for all students. And let me hasten to add, and this applies to a lot of the things that we'll be reporting to you this evening. You know, we commend and we share the good and bad and the ugly, right? The fact of the matter is, none of the things, either positive or areas in need of improvement that we found at Red Wing are in any way unique to Red Wing. They're virtually universal in our work. So we hope we can keep that perspective as we share. The, not surprisingly, the ownership for students with behavioral issues was the most tentative. And that's very common in our work. So while the district has embarked on PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, in the first year, it has been focused primarily on adult behaviors and working toward adult behaviors that minimize behavioral problems on the part of students with social emotional issues, for example. We also looked and found that there was a minimum amount of integrated co-teaching being done, particularly at the elementary level. And where it does exist, it is not necessarily true to the model of, or the fidelity of the model of integrated co-teaching. This is an outstanding example of something we encounter very often in the now more than 300 districts with whom we've partnered. And it's an area of great opportunity. And I know there's an investment on the part of the district in integrated co-teaching. Michael?
Thank you, John. So again, when we talked about our methodologies, sort of triangulating the qualitative and the quantitative, I think this is a great example where Charlie and John had gone to the school, asked about this ownership. And again, somewhat mixed and as John had said, the, the ownership of students with behavioral issues is not surprising that all schools are struggling with that. And then to look at data points that sort of validate that, you can see here on the chart that students in Red Wing are spending less time in general ed than the other county school districts. And that again validates this idea of, you know, special education can exist as a silo. This, when you think about the continuum from resource to students, you know, having maybe a paraprofessional in the classroom to co-teaching, it exists on a continuum. And this suggests that more students than other counties are getting their special education services outside the general education classroom. We can't say for sure that's due to the ownership, but very often when we see these sort of fragmented issues with ownership, it manifests itself with students being out of the classroom more than, more than not. So when we come back, John is going to be talking about areas of opportunity, about co-teaching quite a bit. Co-teaching really requires three things. It requires culture and climate. It requires capacity of the general ed and special ed teachers to work together. And lastly, it requires administrative capacity because a lot of this comes down to the master schedule and making sure that students are, are assigned to classrooms that allow co-teaching to occur. So it really is an area of opportunity. Again, this is, as Dr. Kite had said, we do this work from across the country. This idea of meeting students' needs successfully within the classroom. Co-teaching is a beautiful model when it works well, but it, it does a lot to it. Lisa, we can go to the next slide, please.
One of the questions that we probe with people is, what is the climate or culture around an IEP meeting where there is going to be a, a reduction in a service or a discontinuation of a service, like a declassification out of special ed entirely? And the range of options is from celebratory to anxiety ridden and resistive, where people feel that, oh dear, you're taking something away from the student. Happily, we found that the majority of IP meetings that involve these kinds of reductions are celebratory at Red Wing. And just, just as a little bit of the backstory on that, the reason we ask that is it's a very good indicator of how well staff of the district are building relationships with families of students. Where, where there is not effective bridging of the school-parent relationship, there's a lot of concern and anxiety when services are reduced. Now, we're talking about situations where students are succeeding and no longer need a service. And it's the appropriate thing to do to take that service away and let's focus more of that student's time on instruction. So the idea that it's celebratory in your district is a very positive indicator. Respondents were also consistent in their perceptions that there's a need for enhancement of professional development. This is a universal in our work. Even in districts that have very sophisticated and elaborate professional development programs in place, there is always a desire for more. So this is not, not unique or surprising to us, but it does confirm that people want to continue to grow in their work in the district and they, they are desirous of professional development. Special ed teachers specifically reported that they would like to have more access to workshops and conferences that are targeted to helping teachers work with specific disabilities, students representing different disability groups. Paraprofessionals indicated that they were desirous and wanted to understand where, why they were being transferred in some instances, they weren't fully understanding of that and that they were sometimes working with caseloads that they had not yet had training to, to deal with. Lisa? Because of the relationship and Charlie pointed out earlier that I've had quite a bit of experience working in co-op with cooperatives and with districts, working with cooperatives. But because of the nature of those responsibilities, there are different parts of the special education services shared by the district and by the cooperative. Staff were not clear in many instances regarding who is in charge for specific functions, to whom one should go around a certain question or issue. This is again, nearly universal in our experience. Here in my home state of New York, we have what we call Boards of Cooperative Educational Services, which are similar to your co-ops. And there is always the challenge of coordinating and those collaborations between the homeschool district and the co-op. So this is not surprising to us. It, it ranges from not very good to quite excellent, but there is universal room for improvement regardless. In the related matter, it was also reported that staff have perceived a schism between district superintendent and executive director of the co-op. This is very common in our experience. We encounter it quite consistently in our work. And it really is a very addressable circumstance. It really will have some suggestions, some, we see opportunities here. You have good people in roles for the co-op and for the district. There is no reason that, with awareness that this is the perception that this can't be addressed effectively. From a quantitative perspective, the, the administrative structure comprises one, a little over one and a half FTEs, the .5 executive director and the full-time director in the district. And then the early childhood coordinator to oversee at the time of our visit, 515 students with disabilities. So it compares with an expected range based on our database, having worked with so many districts. We still feel that there's an opportunity here. You've had some turnover in your directorship over years and we'll talk about some opportunity we see that may, may help with that problem of the, the turnover or attrition.
John, if I could just maybe talk about that. It was leanly staffed, as I think John was about to get to. So I think this, you know, this quantitative data point is important to keep in mind as we talk about some of the administrative organizational models the district might move forward with when we get to that, when we get to that point. And we know that the director, not the executive, but the director has been a, in the area of turnover in the past few years for the district. And I think it is asking a lot for one person to oversee these many students. So we, you know, I think some of these models could really be considered to shore that up and really make it a, a win for everybody. And then this delineated the next page, which I'll ask Lisa to scroll to in a second. The district does range from leanly staffed to staffed with expectations. Again, we're going to get to the budget part. The employee contribution to budgets are about 80% when, when salaring benefits are considered. So again, this, I think this is a good segue to what we're talking about. But in none of the disciplines, whether it was teachers or related service providers, paraprofessionals, there was certainly not over staffing in any of these areas. And when we talk about some of the celebrations that, as John had said, there's a lot to like of how the cooperative is supporting the district. And I think this is one of those areas that the district is being really well-served by, by the cooperative in terms of making sure those staffing levels are meeting students' needs, but staying within existing resources. Lisa, next slide, please. The district's expenditures of a proportion of the operating budget is higher than other county school districts. You can see that trend line and the most, the most reported data from Minnesota Department of Ed is 20.1% of the overall operating budget is devoted to special education. And we'll talk about what the reasons for that might be. Lisa? Not surprising that per pupil expenditures are also relatively high. Those two are typically correlated. Next slide, please, Lisa. We have to go behemoths. A lot of the questions that Dr. Kite and John and I asked, we know that the special education population is high in Red Wing. And the question we asked, is there a reason why it's 18, 19%? Is there something about the constellation of maybe some of the demographics, some of the challenges? And I think invariably, Charlie and John, people said, yes, there's something about Red Wing. We we have students with needs. And this bears this out because students, there are students with high needs, students on the autism spectrum, ASD, students with intellectual disabilities, students with multiple impairments, students with emotional needs. That's what we would term high needs, low frequency students, because again, they're they're prevalent, not high compared to other disabilities, like learning disabilities, speech language impairment, other health impairment. But students with these disabilities are high needs. They require a lot of intensive programming, paraprofessional support, perhaps, a lot of services. So it's not surprising when we look at the district's expenditures, it is explained in part by the constellation of student needs. So I think that's an important point to consider. We also looked, you know, as John had talked about, sort of the qualitative, the relational aspects of the cooperative and district personnel, we also looked at the financial relationship and how much Red Wing is contributing its allocations to the cooperative as a percentage of the special ed budget. And Red Wing is actually the lowest as a proportion of its operating budget that is spent toward cooperative services. So we thought that was that was an interesting data point as well. Next, Lisa? Another way we considered the way that the cooperative is supporting both the district and its other constituent districts is its rates, how much how much are the going rate, basically, for services that they provide compared to other cooperatives. And you can see the the hourly rate that the cooperative is charging its districts is actually the lowest of all the reporting cooperatives. So they're being very fiscally prudent with this with the services.
Okay, so those are some of the high points of our findings under organizational considerations. What are some of our takeaways? We try to capture those in what we refer to as areas of opportunity. One of those is to further promote a culture of harmony by developing and articulating a unified vision, enhancing the work environment among general and special education departments, and and to integrate, if you will, a professional development program. Very often, we find that our partner districts have excellent mission and vision statements that talk about us all being together on the same team for all of our students. And then inadvertently, we will do something that counters those those articulations. We will say, okay, we've got a wonderful professional development opportunity coming up on differentiation of instruction for our special ed teachers. Well, what is the message to our general ed colleagues? So those are kinds of examples where we see a real advantage across the board in terms of including both generalists and specialists in professional development opportunities. As a part of the leadership's continued efforts to update processes and procedures, you may also want to revisit your program descriptions and to make those available regarding your continuum of program services. Also to create an algorithm, the algorithm, a model that you can share with all staff, so they know, who do I go to for this or for that? Who's the person? Who's my go-to person if I have this kind of a question? Consider greater communication opportunities between the superintendent and the executive director. Probably the simplest and most straightforward way, have the opportunity to sit together and communicate around issues, current and emerging. Consider reorganization of the special education department. And one potential model is on the next slide, Lisa, in which we talk about elementary and secondary coordinators. One of the things for any of us who have been in administrative leadership positions is when we see a position that is a crucial position where there's been a history of of attrition, a lot of turnover, there's that's always a red flag for us. Anybody who's ever had to lead any organization knows that attrition of staff in key roles is problematic. Everybody brings their own skill sets, knowledge and experience to a role. You recruit, you put great effort into recruiting quality people, you want to make sure that you don't lose them. So this is one model, among others, that we can maybe provide some technical assistance to the district, and then it will be always your decision about what you what you do. In terms of your, excuse me, continuum of supports, on the next slide, please? Thank you, Lisa. I know that you asked us to come and look at special education, but we have found in our work that you cannot look at special education in isolation any more than you can effectively operate special education in isolation. So we look at key factors in the general ed structure, supports for students, and do they exist and are they effective? Because they have a direct implication for your special ed program, not the least of which is, the less successful your general education interventions are, the more likely you are to have students referred to special education, rightly or wrongly. So the way we looked at your MTSS system, people reported to us that it is quote unquote, a work in progress. I can tell you quite honestly, that puts you in league with about 98% of the school districts in America. I can recall very few that would point to their MTSS and say, yes, it's perfect. It's just what it needs to be, and it's doing everything we want it to do for our students. This is an area where it is quite common for us to find that there is a need for enhancement of tiered interventions in numeracy, literacy, social emotional learning, behavior, that kind of thing. And quite honestly, that's an area that needs clarification at Red Wing, as it does in many, because it is in fact a general education, not a special education initiative. You do have relatively high number, high percentage of students identified in special education. At the time of our visit, it was 18% of your students are in special education with IEPs. That's higher, as you can see on the graph at the bottom of the page here, than your county schools across the board. And one of the contributing factors most certainly would be MTSS. You want to, we'll talk more about that, and we can provide some support to that if you're interested. And you also have, as Michael was saying earlier, some unique characteristics in your student population, your student demographic.
Thank you, John. Lisa, if we can go to the next slide, please? So I want to talk a little bit about kind of a deeper dive in that data. John had talked about special population in the district is high. But when we look at what we call, sort of, this is the inverse of what we talked about with the high need students, students with autism, students with intellectual disabilities, what we call high needs of low frequency. This is the reverse. These are students with relatively lower needs educationally and higher frequency. So students with specific learning disabilities, SLD, other health impairment, OHI, that can mean a lot of things, but it's essentially students more often than not with attention deficit challenges, and SLI, speech language impairment. Those three typically are the most frequently occurring. And when we see those, when we see a high proportion of that, of those disabilities, it typically is another indicator that MTSS or RTI is a work in progress, because these are students that may not have a true educational disability, but have trouble accessing the curriculum, just because, you know, they're just not being taught the way they need to, direction and instruction, for whatever reason. So it's somewhat encouraging to see that that constellation was lower than the state and the county. That was that was encouraging to see, because it means that students are not being overrepresented in those areas. Next slide, please? Just to reiterate, when we talk, now we're talking about students with disabilities, how is the continuum of services with students with IEPs meet their needs? And again, we talked about this continuum that across the district, there is a continuum, whether students are in, you know, classrooms that meet their needs in the cooperative, or getting more intensive related services at the school level. Across the district, the continuum exists. And I'll also include, John, the tower program that you visited for the alternative program that does support students with needs as part of that constellation. So the district does provide, does in keeping with the federal mandate of special education law, does provide a continuum. Within that, just to reiterate the point, co-teaching is part of the continuum. It's not meant for everyone. If it does not meet the student needs, and co-teaching is not the least restrictive environment. But it's certainly, the data does suggest that as part of the continuum, that is something that can be shored up. We will also look at some IDA indicators. IDA is the basically the federal law that mandates how special education should be delivered. And there are some indicators, like graduation rates, that all districts have to report. You can see the graduation rate at Wing is lower than the county, and that's something that we'll talk about as an area of opportunity. So there are also a couple of celebrations in terms of student achievement. Part of the IDA indicators are to look at the special ed cohort. So looking at state testing, for example, students with disabilities, they can be with districts that are large enough, when there's a large enough, a large N, or size of that cohort that can be pulled out. We can look at the student performance in a number of ways. And if we could scroll down, Lisa, please? We can look at achievement gap over time. So in other words, we can see how students with disabilities are doing relative to students without disabilities. In other words, is their achievement gap growing or narrowing over time? We hope it does narrow. And you can see in Red Wing on the left, that 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 the achievement gap was narrowing. In other words, over time, more recently, students with disabilities are getting are catching up to students without disabilities. So that's a real celebration. Next slide is to look at proficiency rates. And you can see Red Wing, when we combine the students achieving proficiency as an aggregate across ELA and math, it's it's the highest in the county. So special ed, students with special education needs are being well-served in terms of their performance.
So some areas of opportunity in your continuum of support. So the first, the very first one, here are the special educators talking to you about bolstering your general education system and supports for students. Your MTSS process can probably be one of the most cost-effective and impactful areas of opportunity for you. And one of these areas, one of the ways in which it can be enhanced is as school principals lead this initiative to emphasize ownership. We talked earlier about ownership for all students. Very often, we see that general educators don't see MTSS as a general education initiative. They see it as a pathway to special ed or belonging to special ed, when in fact, it's not. So to to articulate this in a way that everyone understands, this is in fact, my area. I, as a general education teacher, have responsibility for interventions in my classroom beyond what I traditionally might have been expected to do. To continue to have expectations for MTSS and have those reviewed annually and supported through easily accessible and understood protocols. We've seen some systems developed with the best of intentions, systems that were cumbersome and burdensome to teachers. So it was it was not viewed as helpful to students. It became another obstacle for teachers. And you want to have it as streamlined, as user-friendly, if I may say, as possible, free one involved. This third check mark on this slide is critically important. Probably the most significant need that we find among all of our partners, and I don't think Red Wing is unique in this, is that our classroom teacher colleagues need to avail themselves of opportunities to understand and become facile in an expanded array of interventions. Teachers will come forward and say, I've tried everything with this student. Well, when we probe that a little bit, we find out that they've tried one or two different strategies, which are perfectly viable for most students, but that pretty much exhausts their repertoire. So they understandably say, I've tried everything I know. I need help. And it winds up being a special ed referral. What we know is that there is an array, a vast array of additional strategies out there. And and we, as districts, basically have the opportunity and the obligation to make that professional development available. Many of the districts we've partnered with, where numbers of students in special education were escalating, when we probed, we found out that many of those students' needs could conceivably have been successfully addressed in the general ed classroom, had those faculty members had the opportunity to learn those strategies for intervention. We would also recommend that you focus the quantification of MTSS data, so that there is a greater awareness, greater opportunity for reflection on the part of faculty and administration, for the enhancement of student outcomes, certainly, but also to understand the trends. What's the trajectory here? Are we successfully meeting student needs? Are we sure that we're not having students fall through the cracks? And by becoming more data focused, you're already doing the work with the students, let's bring that data together and let's reflect as professionals on it with some degree of regularity, be it at a faculty meeting, be it at whatever intervals. So this is part of the conversation in every school. Next slide, please?
So John had talked about quantification. This is a great example. This is from a school district John and I had conducted a study with about three years ago in the Hudson Valley. And they rolled up their data across all schools. So it wasn't just one school was reporting their MTSS data, another school, and it just kind of ended up, you know, on someone's desk. They took data, they rolled it up, and they used it as a reference point for the principals to talk about. And you can see the power of this. The top rate was the number of students that were referred as part of the overall population. And the bottom one is the number of students that were classified for special education. So this whole idea of false positives and false negatives, if we pull this apart, any one of those students that were referred for evaluation went through at least three hours of testing from the school psychologist, perhaps from a speech language pathologist, an IEP was held. The beauty of of the state is this makes sure that students, appropriate amount of students are referred for special education, and attracts those students that were referred, did they in fact qualify? And it's a very sensitive tool for a district to have, for all the principals to to again reflect on the the efficacy of MTSS. We go to the next slide, please, Lisa? Another powerful tool, Dr. Kite had mentioned futures work across the country. And as much as I'd like to take credit for some of the best practices we bring to bear, the fact is, we pick them up along the way. So John and I were in a district in the Midwest, and they were using MTSS as a step down. We asked about that. So what do you mean? They said, students who no longer need special education services, whether it's their three year triennial review, or whether it's an off-cycle review, they no longer need special education, but they need something. They are able to fall into tiered interventions. And that's a great model, because, again, And that's a great model because again, special ed is not a, keep saying it, it's not a silo. It's not a place. It's a service to help students you know, achieve expectations within the general education framework. And this idea of a step down helps make sure that students who don't need special education are getting the supports they need, but they do not need to be classified. So this is a model that we're very excited about. Next slide, please, Lisa.
There we go. One of the areas of opportunity that we would see within your continuum is to revisit the co-teaching and enhance that, expand upon it. Integrated co-teaching is a research-based and field-tested model of instructional intervention which transcends the boundaries of special and general education. When it is done well and effectively, everybody wins. And by that, I mean not only your identified students with disabilities, but your general education students in those integrated classrooms and the team of professionals who are collaborating in the work. As an aside, when we talk about ownership of students and comfort levels, without exception in our work, we find that the ownership, excuse me, the ownership of students with disabilities on the part of general educators is consistently highest among those general educators who have had an opportunity to work with students with disabilities in collaboration with a special education colleague. It's a very powerful model. It has some, some requisite components. You know, you want to select your partnerships for success, hopefully. You want to provide the, the necessary professional development. Many times we will encounter districts where we're told that co-teaching is happening. And then when we visit, what we find is that two people have been assigned, they're good quality people. And they say, okay, you're going to be co-teachers, go forth and be productive. Well, what happens in the absence of professional development is essentially people take turns teaching. I'll teach and you observe, then you teach and I'll observe. Without awareness of the half a dozen variations on the theme of co-teaching and when each of those models can be most effectively applied on behalf of students. So the professional development component is important, as is effective scheduling of students to make the system work. And then ongoing problem solving and monitoring. Do teachers, for example, have opportunities for co-planning? They're going to be co-teaching. We want to be sure that they have the opportunity to prepare for that, that lesson or that day's instruction. So integrated co-teaching is a tremendous area of opportunity. You've already laid the foundation for it and we encourage you to pursue it. To supplement the success currently occurring in the high school with respect to integration of special and general education students, the district may want to consider establishing a credit-bearing peer mentorship program for students in the high school. The next slide, please. All of us who have worked in schools know the, the challenges that go along with the many different transitions that students experience from preschool to school age, from elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, what have you. And then the ultimate transition to post-secondary life. We have not, as educators, always been terribly effective in supporting students and families through those various transitions. Very often, the sending school will have seen progress in a student and be very excited about it and presume the student is ready for that receiving, the next year, that receiving school experience. And then what we see is the receiving school says, this student isn't ready for what we do here in our program. It's, it's really kind of a, a break in the communication and the vertical articulation of programming and in the, the coordination of those transitions for students. So you may want to very seriously consider developing articulation, vertical articulation teams or transition teams. Those folks representing the upper grade level in the sending school and the receiving grade level at the other end of that transition to promote understanding, awareness and to ensure that the supports of student needs are in place at the, at the end of that transition. Also may want to consider in terms of, particularly in terms of graduation rates, this would be impactful, to go with some more attention to practical supports like CTE, career technical education opportunities for students. Not every student is college-bound. You know, there, there's an array of excellent options for our students now. And career tech ed provides a great support to students. Okay, the next slide, please. So in summary, we found so many wonderful things going on in your district and wonderful people who are student-centered and committed to your students. It was really a very positive experience for us and we appreciate that. And we respect and are inspired by the good things that your people are doing. That being said, here are some priority areas that you may want to consider as you move forward in this initiative. Organizational considerations. Ensure that all staff understand the expectation of ownership of all students. And we've provided technical assistance to many of our partners on this. There are lots of strategies, including making it very clear in your recruitment of staff, right from the posting through the interview process and through the offering of a position that as, as a staff member of the Red Wing schools, you will be expected to work with students with disabilities, to collaborate with specialists. There's no such thing as a segregated, separate general education program anymore. So please understand that as you join us, we're happy to have you with us with that understanding. This is our best practice. This is how we do what we do for our students. Provide more professional development and training for teacher assistants, teachers and administrators on current and emerging topics relative to best practice. Integrated co-teaching, behaviors, autism, early interventions, those tier-one interventions for classroom teachers. These are all very timely topics. And from our experience in your district, your staff are hungry for those professional development opportunities. Develop and disseminate written program descriptions so it is clearly articulated and available to all stakeholders, in-house, parents, whomever. This is, this is our array of programs and services and who each, and who each of those is designed to serve. Promote enhanced communication between superintendent and executive director. That, that's an easy fix, don't you think? And given the myriad of duties within the purview of the director, we use the term offloading here, delegation of some of those responsibilities. One of the things that we've seen, and I think it's applicable here, is that very often districts through concerted effort recruit quality people who bring experience, work ethic, commitment, intelligence to these key leadership roles. And because of the organizational structure and the array of responsibilities assigned, those people are, are overwhelmed with the day-to-day to the point that they don't get, despite great work ethic, they don't get to the big issues. They don't get to the leadership things that not only the district wants, but that they want to address in terms of vision, program direction and leadership, providing support and quality assurance. Those kinds of leadership things, sadly to say, are very often the things that go begging because somebody's busy chairing an IEP meeting or dealing with, dealing with those kinds of issues that can very appropriately and readily be delegated to, say, a coordinator-type position. Next slide, Lisa, please. Consistently promote access to evidence-based practices within MTSS structure across the tiers of intervention. And particularly with respect to tier-one in the classroom teachers. You want to continue to promote effective documented research-based interventions so that teachers feel their own power to address students who maybe don't comport with their traditional expectations of every student. So that they don't feel the need to, to refer to special ed. A student whose needs might readily be addressed in the general education classrooms in the areas of literacy, numeracy and social emotional learning. Explore and adopt a district-wide academic curriculum. One of the things that has changed dramatically in special education through its evolution is the idea that special educators are to teach their students to the general education curriculum. The whole intent of special education is student independence. To declassify successfully a student with a disability so that that student can return full-time to the general education program. Well, in order to do that effectively, there has to be parallel teaching. Our special ed colleagues have to be teaching to the same curriculum as the general ed teachers. Otherwise, we're further disabling our students. The student could make great progress with respect to whatever his or her disability might be. But if they've not been kept astride of their general ed peers in terms of curriculum, they're at something of a loss and when they reach that point of being declassified. The vertical articulation or transition teams that I alluded to earlier, there's a lot of bang for the buck in that in terms of enhancing successful transitions for our students. The enhancement of your co-teaching, again, not to beat it to death, but that, that is an area of great opportunity for you and your students, both special ed students and general ed students as well as staff. Strengthen career and tech ed to enhance your graduation rates would be another, what we would see as a prime area of opportunity. And that concludes the high points of our findings and our identification of areas of opportunity. And Michael and Charlie and I would be happy to entertain questions.
I know that Holly Tower had asked a couple of questions in the chat area. Michael and John and Charlie, I'm not sure if you know how to use chat. If not, I can read them.
I, I see them.
I'll give you a little bit of time there to, to read through the questions.
I, I think one of the first questions that jumped out for me was the question about the efficacy, the evidence base for co-teaching. What's the proof that it works? If I'm reflecting that question from Holly correctly?
Yes.
John, I think there are a couple of ways to answer that. One is sort of the, the LRE, the least restrictive, clearly, I think that's self-evident, that would, that would support better outcomes. The others, MTSS, one of the things I think you alluded to was that co-teaching has a lot of benefits. One of them is meeting the needs of students that might need tiered interventions with that strategy expert. I think the third question about what does the actual data say about, you know, outcomes testing? We do have some empirical data on that. We'd be happy to share with Carson, to share with the board. But maybe, John, you can kind of pick it up just sort of as a best practice perspective?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can understand where you're saying best practice perspective, but you're asking us to spend an awful lot of money moving in that direction. And I would like to know from your perspective, what are, what are the gains?
Well, here's, here's what our, our experience would say. You're going to see, I believe, a couple of things that are quite dramatic. You'll see students succeed in ways that you have not experienced thus far in terms of enhanced graduation. Fewer referred to special ed because the general ed students in those classes also succeed. You also see energized faculty. I've seen two programs in my now 50-year career that have made dramatic differences in teachers' professional practice. One is becoming board-certified as an individual, which will bring teachers to be essentially reborn in the profession by becoming board-certified. The second of those things is being a part of a co-teaching dyad. We've had teachers talk to us about what it has meant to their professional practice to collaborate and to see students succeed whom they had individually thought would never succeed. We just went, completed a three-year project down in the Dallas-Fort Worth area where the Grand Prairie School District put integrated co-teaching in 30 schools, in a 30,000-student district. The, the experience of going through the professional development and seeing those teachers come alive in their profession is, is nothing less than inspiring. We've had teachers say that they would rather retire than go back to teaching in isolation because of what they've learned in collaboration. And one of the things when we're, when we're doing technical assistance with districts on integrated co-teaching, we recommend the things that we talked about earlier in terms of professional development and selecting for success and collaboration, common planning time. We also recommend that presuming the team is working well together, keep them together as much as you possibly can. They just keep getting better. It's sort of like a professional marriage. By the end of the first year, they're very excited about it. Somewhere between the second and third years, they, they are finishing each other's thoughts. They, they interact as, as one. And they, and the benefit goes to all of the students in their charge. I think you'll see some very specific benefits as well as enhancing the culture of your faculty throughout the district.
John, would you answer the question?
Well, I was gonna say, oh, sorry to interrupt, but those are anecdotal and I appreciate that. I've also co-taught for 10 years in special ed. So I have a tremendous amount of experience with the anecdotal, anecdotal pieces. For it to really be effective, did you see any evidence so far of Red Wing and Good Hugh County Ed providing staff development in co-teaching?
Michael?
No, I'm, I'm, we, we didn't, I mean, in our, in us, that did not seem to be a, a focus of PD that we saw.
Did anybody mention it or ask why it hadn't happened?
Within, within our work, there was, there was a kind of a broad-based expression of a felt need for professional development, including areas like co-teaching and the other areas we talked about. You have, there's no question based on our experience that you have faculty throughout the district who are eager to grow in their professional practice.
Awesome.
And if I could just, Holly, I want to make sure I'm also reflecting your question about the, and it's a very good and practical question. When we get a lot in our work is the cost of co-teaching, John.
Yeah.
And, and I think if you don't mind maybe talking about homogenous grouping, your experience in the Dallas area, that there's a way to do it that's effective for students, but also isn't necessarily onerous, an onerous cost for the district.
Well, and here's the thing, every district, well, we may have encountered one that didn't have any budget limitations, but virtually every district has a finite resource in terms of money. And we understand that, you know, on the face of it, it looks very expensive. As I learned a long time ago, in, in human services, including education, the difficulty for economists in doing cost-benefit analyses is in the intangibles. Because so much of what we do in schools results in intangibles as well as quantitative results. So we can see, see student success in assessments, in declassifications, in graduations and so forth. But we know But we know, as educators and as parents, that there's a vast array of intangibles beyond that, changing a student's life essentially for the better. That being said, I don't want to sound too Pollyanna-ish about this. The reality is that some districts embark on integrated co-teaching in a modified way. The pure form is two teachers together all day, every day, and that's the model. Not every district has been able to find its way to do that in a pure form. So we have seen districts where one special ed teacher may partner with more than one general education teacher for part of the day and move from class to class. There are different variations on the theme that can help enhance the efficiency or the cost-effectiveness of the model and still generate significant benefits to students.
Yes, I think one of the big things that I've experienced personally and what trips this up is when you have a co-teacher who's delegated to one space and works with four kids. They can't case manage four kids. It's not cost-effective. They could have 22 kids on their caseload. So where does that time management come? And that's what I'm talking about in terms of how effective has it been in the big picture in the real world? I have all types of anecdotal, like hurrah moments where it succeeded in tiny pockets. I want us to be real about this when we're saying we should embark on it.
One of the real aspects of it is how do we group and cluster our students? We recommend, and then again, there are obvious cost components to this. We recommend that where possible, when you're building an integrated co-taught class, that identified students should make up not more than about a third of the class. Well, that's wonderful, and with the right groupings of students, that can be very effective. Not every district has been able to do it at that level. We would urge that in terms of cost-effectiveness, that districts not go over a 50-50 ratio of students with IEPs to non-identified, so that you've got half and half. And we've seen, if the students are selected properly, that that can work very, very well. The one thing I would go back to is what Michael said. Integrated co-teaching is a wonderful model, and it can be very effective for students. It is not a one-size-fits-all. It is not a magic pill. It is not designed to serve every identified student in your district. But as we learned, for example, in our Texas project, it can effectively reach more students than we might have anticipated. And what it also does, this is for the district's benefit, I would say, it dramatically enhances your inclusion variable so that you have many more students now who are spending significant portions, or maybe even all of their day, with non-disabled peers. The other factor that comes to mind just from an administrative perspective is the difference between elementary and secondary. You know, you can do integrated co-teaching by subject areas at the secondary level. You could also make that happen at the elementary, but it just isn't quite the way we tend to think in the elementary schools.
Thank you for that. Yeah, there's lots of factors in it, and elementary and middle school and high school are all different approaches on how that works. I go back to the case management of expecting a co-teacher to work within a classroom and identify set of students, and then the case management of their other students that they're responsible for. It's very tricky. So I've experienced it, like you said, where it can be positive in anecdotal pockets. I want us to be very, very clear on what that could look like for Red Wing. And it's not a, you need to go do co-teaching. This is gonna work.
Right.
It's a very detailed approach to what could work for what kids. But I've had experiences where people say, oh, co-teaching's the thing. Here's the book. Go read it and develop a relationship with the co-teacher.
Yeah.
Do you like stronger?
This is Charlie.
Hi, Charlie.
Hi. I've been kind of quiet listening, but I could step in just for a sec here. I interviewed most of the teachers at Burnside, or the staff we interviewed at Burnside and Sunnyside. I did see some evidence of co-teaching. It was happening more because the teachers kind of knew and liked each other. I saw some evidence of people saying, we're co-teaching, but they really weren't. And then I saw quite a bit of it not happening. I would make this point. If you work on the vertical integration issue from building to building, some of this can start to fall in place better. To some degree, and I don't want to overstate it, but to some degree, the kids finish in one school and they just, the IEPs are simply handed to the other school, picked up by people who don't know anything about them. And there needs to be an effort to, from the principal level earlier as you're starting to put students into classes, to figure out specifically which students should go where. And then, as the school year either ends or begins, there needs to be a time when the, I'll call them the exiting teachers at one school and the entering teachers at the other school actually have time to be together and discuss the students, discuss what works and what doesn't work, so that on day one of the new school year, the kids coming into any school, the staff actually has some understanding who those kids are and what works well for them. Otherwise, they spend two weeks, three weeks, a month trying to sort it out. So there's this vertical articulation piece could really help in kind of setting the stage, number one, for a little bit more co-teaching, and number two, for the MTSS working together type of a piece. So I'll just throw that in as something that I think could happen. I've worked in systems where we moved the kids quite quickly from building to building, and that's one of the challenges that you run into. By the way, sometimes people say, well, just change it. Just have like three elementary buildings, K5. That also has problems. So whatever system you have, you just need to kind of figure out how to overcome the problem. And I think the vertical articulation could go a ways to handling some of the other things you're working on.
Thank you. I like that advice.
I'd like to throw another monkey wrench into this conversation about integrated co-teaching. And this is a lesson that was a takeaway for us in our Texas experience. We talked about, you know, selecting for success when you partner teachers and provide support to them to become a co-teaching team. And that's great. But then think about your cultural issues that we talked about earlier in terms of ownership and so forth. This is an administrative challenge, and this is a tightrope at the beginning. Ultimately, it becomes part of the culture. But you have to be very careful in the process at the front end to not allow it to be misinterpreted as, well, we'd like you to be a co-teacher if you feel like it. If we think co-teaching is best practice, and we do if it's done well, it isn't voluntary ultimately. It's part of the job. And we need to convey that in a supportive way to just say, look, this is a best practice. You know, if you were going in for surgery and your surgeon wasn't completely imbued with best practice, you probably wouldn't go to that surgeon. If children are coming to our schools and their parents, and they are expecting and entitled to best practice, we can't really afford to have people on board who are saying, well, no, I don't feel like that. It's not part of my philosophy.
Which would really boil down to cohesive and effective professional development for staff.
Certainly, because a lot of the resistance that we encounter in any initiative is based on fear of the unknown.
So you don't just say, we're gonna do it. You actually practice, and then you do it.
Exactly.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, one of the questions from Heidi, and I'm not sure, Heidi, if you wanted to articulate the question about ownership and maybe how to operationalize that and capture that?
Right, that's exactly what I'm looking for. I mean, I think that's a culture, and I think it needs to start with the board down. I think we have issues in that area, as you have pointed out in your report. So, and I know this is a long conversation. But could you give us some idea of what those first couple of steps look like? I mean, how do we start changing culture? And how do we change it effectively and quickly so that we can help maximize our help for students?
Sure, and you're right. It's a large conversation over time. But just some of the key points. First of all, I would say engagement is an essential component. You want to bring key stakeholders together to have this conversation. One of the advantages and opportunities of leadership is to define the conversation in a system, in a school district. And I think it starts with your mission and vision statements. And to bring people together and say, are we satisfied with the language of these statements? And if we are, almost certainly it says, we're all here for all students, only far more eloquently than that. So then the question becomes, on a day-to-day basis, in practice, are we living up to what we've said are our mission and our vision?
Right.
And to engage people in that dialogue is powerful. And it's not a quick fix, but it also is possible. It isn't insurmountable. It may take a school year to have that become a conscious part of people's awareness. I know in one of my districts, our goal was that you could tap any employee on the shoulder and say, what is this district about? And they, in their own words, could give you a good answer that was aligned with the mission and vision of the district. And I think, you know, if you ask a teacher, I challenge you to do this. Ask a teacher, how many of your students are expendable? I almost guarantee you that the answer will be, well, none. None of my students are expendable. And then you follow it up with more specific questions like, how many of your students are succeeding, and are you having a good year? And if they say, well, 85% of my students are soaring. They're just doing great, and it's a wonderful year. Well, that's cause for celebration, the 85%, but what about the other 15?
Right.
So I've actually had experienced teachers say to me, when are we gonna stop having these conversations? And my response to that was, do we have any students we're not reaching successfully? And they say, well, yeah, a couple. I said, well, as long as we got two, you know, I'll be a cheerleader. I'll celebrate our success. But let's talk about what we could do differently for those two kids. I don't think it has to be a harsh or critical approach. I don't think it has to point fingers of blame at anybody. It's to acknowledge, we're all at some level in our professional practice, and we've all committed to being lifelong learners. We say we want our students to be lifelong learners. Let's celebrate our successes and build on the foundation. And I think it's engagement is the way you do it.
All right. Thank you very much.
I saw some dialogue in the chat about MTSS and curriculum. I wasn't sure if those were questions or if that was just dialogue among the board. I want to be mindful to pose that as a question if that is something the board wanted to address.
I can address it really quick. Janie asked a question. We just adopted a new reading curriculum. And when they were explaining it to us, Jess did say that there are components for multi-tiered levels of support for kids. I think the real critical piece is making sure that they're on the same page with how they're tracking interventions and how they're using the curriculum, instead of just handing it to people and letting them just go, okay, why don't you try this? Why don't you try this? Why don't you try this? And they do have professional development provided for that, Janie, but I don't necessarily know what planning they have done around it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was muted before, but I think it was, you know, mainly for our staff, but maybe if the futures group wants to comment, if you saw glaring issues with their curriculum at the time where teachers felt like they didn't have, you know, the supports, I have a feeling that was probably the case. But, you know, maybe if you want to talk about comment, if you see that in other districts as far as, you know, we want our teachers to have, you know, individual efforts and put their own personal flair on things. But I also want to have them have, you know, some of the same tiered interventions, whether it be all the way up to tier four, that they actually have things in place where they don't have to reinvent things for different kids, so.
Let me, this is Charlie again. Let me speak a little bit to that. Because I picked this up at the elementary. It was the reading curriculum you adopted this year. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. One of the things that, I heard this comment several times, so it's more than just anecdotal. It was, we spent a lot of money on staff selecting the curriculum, but once the curriculum was selected, we kind of ran out of money, I don't know if it was money or time, to really teach people how to use it. But what really came through to me was I had a number of special ed teachers said, we didn't really get any training on it at all. So if you're looking for the special ed teachers to co-teach and enhance the teaching of the regular teachers, but they're unclear of what that curriculum is, that's a problem. Now, you can back up, and going into this next year, make sure you overcome that. But I saw that as an issue, and I saw it. I say anecdotal, but when I hear, you know, six, seven times, it started to stand out. And again, I'm not sure if it was the math curriculum or the reading curriculum. I want to tell you that I'm not quite sure, just thinking back right now.
Yeah, definitely the math curriculum because that was implemented this year. The implementation didn't go as well as planned, and there was some missing curriculum pieces. So I think we'll have a better handle on it when we implement English Language Arts curriculum in grades K through five next year. But it's, they're valid concerns.
Yeah, and I think combined with the fact that a number of the special ed teachers were relatively new, kind of still finding their way. But it's something that can be overcome, and you could turn that into a positive.
Could I just share, related to this, we were in a district here in the east last year, and in this work, every once in a while, somebody says something that just burns into my memory cells. And I was meeting with this teacher at the secondary level, and he'd been there a good number of years, 20-some years. And he said, you know, we're great starters. And I said, what do you mean? He said, look at all the curriculum we've bought. Look at all the initiatives we've started that have died on the vine. And what you were just saying, Charlie, reminded me of that comment because I don't think it's unique to that district or to Red Wing. I think it's a universal challenge, quite honestly. And in that district, what they had done is they would kick the initiative off, the new piece of curriculum or whatever it was, the new program, the new strategy, with some professional development, never to be repeated. Well, people come and people go, you know? And there was no sustaining professional development. So good programs, and they had invested millions of dollars in very good stuff, that wasn't in place. And so when we would ask questions like, are the practices in your school similar in the other schools of the district? The answer was consistently, no, not at all. We're all doing something differently. Well, when students transition from school to school, that's a tough road. So it's not just at the front end, but it's the sustaining professional development and this teacher orientation for new members and so forth. What is this district about? What do we do? What is expected of me as an educator? I just don't think we can overstate that.
And John, that describes Red Wing very well for many, many years, but we intend to have stronger fidelity of implementation, no doubt about it.
Well, I may finish that up. I mean, I think that was one reason why all of us, when we heard the new curriculum and the description of it, we're, you know, it was so exciting to know how much was already integrated into that curriculum. So, and I think we just, as a board, I'll speak for myself, but I think we just have to, yeah, keep on asking questions and expect that. And even, you know, I know we have a lot of teachers and admin on here. I'm glad that we've made changes to our schedule and, you know, put time and commitment into doing that. So I just hope that we can continue to use that time and that space that we've already carved out in certain situations to truly implement that with fidelity, so.
This is Charlie again. As we come toward, I think we're coming towards the end. Two things I would like to leave you with as well. We looked pretty hard at the financial arrangements of the district and the co-op. Um, we looked pretty hard at the financial arrangements of the district and the co-op. And uh, we actually found that you have a very efficient model in terms of how much you're spending to uh, manage your financial situation. Um, so I want to leave you with that as one thing. Um, the other is, is that if there's any way that you can come to the point where you have uh, a longer term, more consistent district special education director. You, I, as you all know, you've had constant turnover in that position for quite some time. And when you find people in the ranks being confused, a lot of it has to do with people coming and going, coming and going, coming and going. So whatever you can do to shore up that position, give it enough support. If you have to add a little staff or something. Uh, but if you can get that position to start having longevity in it, a number of the issues you're dealing with will start to resolve themselves. Yeah, but those are two parts that I I just thought I'd like to leave you with.
Thank you so much for that. Um, Carson, do you want to?
Can I ask a question yet?
Of course, sorry. Do you have?
This is Arland here, because I'm a board member here.
Hi, Arland.
In your organizational considerations, areas of opportunity, you show with a primary or elementary coordinator and a secondary coordinator. I know we've been told that early intervention can hopefully bring people out of IEPs during, if we can get a early intervention. I'm wondering if there was any, we had numbers of what our percentage of special ed and IEPs are in our district. Do we have any numbers that say that's consistent throughout the district or throughout the grade levels all the way up? Or are we higher than normal in the high secondary area and and normal in the lower? So we're not getting people off of IEPs because we're not carrying through? And I'm looking at this area opportunity model. And I'm wondering if it would maybe give us more emphasis in the elementary time that might get some of our students off of IEPs by the time they get to secondary school. Is that what you're trying to accomplish or some of that?
Well, yes. Yeah.
John, go ahead.
I just, I just want to weigh in quickly and then I'll let Michael take it. I, early intervention is a win. Yeah, you know, if you can get to students early on and be on target with the interventions that they need, you're going to address a lot of problems early on. And you should see declassifications increase and to have fewer students um, the long term with an IEP. Um, you know, not every, every one of your students is severely disabled. You have many students who have disabilities that can be addressed so that to a degree where they can be successful in school. So I would just based on my experience, say yes. Uh, I don't have the specific answer to your data question. I don't know, Michael, if you do.
I I think it's a great question, you know, when we have that model of the coordinator that truly is a special ed coordinator, the the lion's share of that person's work would be in special ed, facilitating IEPs, quality assurance for IEPs, doing the day to day things that um, sometimes a director gets bogged down doing. So it doesn't allow her to do those programmatic visionary types of things. I will say, John, I I would think that the coordinator would have a secondary role. Um, uh, no pun intended, but let me change that. Because there's a secondary, a another role where being at the IEP could help reflect on data to determine students are truly being unclassified. Um, you know, uh, in in accordance with best practices. And also maybe to support students coming off IEPs as well with that model we talked about.
One of, one of the challenges in special education, um, and and it's relevant, I think, to this discussion, uh, is that very often, uh, directors are so inundated with responding to referrals that they don't get to attend to the the ultimate goal of special ed, which is student independence. Uh, they're, they're just too busy. They're too busy responding to referrals, getting the assessments done in a timely fashion, convening IEP meetings, getting students placed. Um, so that there's, it's a front loaded investment. And too often, the outcome piece of it just doesn't get the attention it needs and deserves. Are we seeing students achieve ambitious goals and become increasingly independent? Are our students moving to increasingly less restrictive environments? Are we declassifying students? Those are big questions in terms of the effectiveness of the program that very often directors don't even have time to ask in a serious way.
So we've heard a lot of information tonight, and this is a lot to digest. Carson, do you just want to take a minute or two to talk about next steps with all of this information? I kind of want to move us into our next piece on the agenda. But anything else for these gentlemen while we have them on the line? And then, Carson, if you could wrap that up with kind of next steps.
Sure, um, I'll just jump in and uh, say that um, we appreciate the efforts that uh, Futures did for us. Uh, it's good information. Uh, the real answers, though, will come out of discussions that take place from now on. And so not only GCD, but Red Wing officials, including administrative staff, will need to look at the report and then choose what to focus on first. Uh, we don't want to be adding twenty different initiatives to our workload right now. Um, you know, but we do need to do uh, two or three significant um, uh, areas. Uh, and we need to really focus on them and then hold people accountable to make sure that they're done. So uh, we'll be doing that internally and then we'll definitely report out to the board.
Can you give us a little bit of a timeline? Do you have some sort of idea on that, Carson?
Well, I will say that the two things, well, there are three things. Uh, first of all, the organizational chart is going to be part of the discussion here in just a few minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the other two big takeaways, uh, and it's not surprising, uh, but certainly our focus on co-teaching uh, needs to be stronger. Um, and uh, also our focus on uh, multi-tiered systems of supports or MTSS. We have to implement that system in a much stronger way. It's really complicated right now. People get frustrated with each other. I have expectations. Others have expectations that are not being met. And uh, we need to to get our act together in that regard. So those are the three things that I can say right off the top of my head. But there are some other really good suggestions in that report as well.
And gentlemen from Futures, how long can we um, a- as part of your contract with us, how long can we come back and ask questions or clarification? Or if we have other concerns that come up? Um, is there an end date in mind or is this kind of open ended?
It's, it's open ended. It's whatever you and the board and leadership, you know, if you want to reflect on the, on the report, you know, questions, as part of our partnership and no additional fee or anything, we, we remain available to you.
Thank you. We appreciate that because this is a lot to um, digest. We just got the, the final piece, the report um, about a week ago. So um, we will definitely keep your numbers handy. And we very much appreciate your time this evening. And um, we'll, we'll be in contact. But thank you, Carson, as well for engaging us this evening. And uh, there's no further questions. We'll move on with our agenda, if that's okay.
Very good. And we, uh, we thank you um, for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. We'll uh, we'll sign off.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
For the rest of us, I know it's kind of getting late. I don't want to recess at all, but since we're at home, um, if you need to stand up and stretch while uh, we keep going with the meeting, that's completely okay. As long as you can keep hearing us, that would be great. We'll keep on trucking along. So Carson, I'm going to turn it over to you for the human resources portion of uh, of the agenda.
All right, I'm gonna switch to the presentation mode. So it'll take just uh, a little bit here. You'll need to, to go under the people icon and then uh, choose my name that says presentation in parentheses. And hopefully you can see my screen. Can you guys see it? Say, Lisa, if you're on the call, you may need to stop presenting if you haven't already done so.
I have, yep, I have done that. And I also have the two documents for the Human Resource Plan. If you want me to pull those up for you.
Uh, yes, fantastic. If you can choose the one that's called Just Human Resources Plan with uh, today's date. Thankfully Lisa's here to do that for us. I will say, as she calls that up, I'll just uh, talk about it a little bit. Uh, first of all, this is a draft dated today. Uh, we are constantly uh, making adjustments based on feedback that we hear. And so this is not the end. This is not the final recommendation. You don't have to vote on this, uh, but it's a, it's an important step in the process. I will also say that I did change uh, priorities. In the past, I was saying priorities one, two, and three. Uh, but then I changed it up a little bit. I have priorities one through six. Uh, if, if something's billed as a priority one, then I think that um, uh, that's a recommendation if we have up to a hundred thousand dollars to spend. Uh, if it's two, priority two, then it's up to two hundred thousand dollars to spend. Uh, three up to three hundred thousand, four up to four hundred thousand. And then five and six are just uh, in order. So it looks a little bit different. Sorry about that, Lisa. I'm the one who should have stopped presenting. My, my apologies. So first of all, um, oh, there we go. You can see the um, uh, the next bucket of information has to do with classroom teachers for next year. Uh, these are uh, rough estimates based on enrollment. I won't go into great detail with the section numbers, but I will talk briefly about what alternative and co-taught classrooms in each grade might look like. Um, and uh, you can see the, the very last column is the one that's recommended. Uh, so we recommend uh, those sections in kindergarten, first uh, grade. And then in grades two through four, uh, we'd like to have eight, eight or 10 sections, depending on the grade. Um, and all but two of them would be traditional classrooms. Um, another classroom would be a co-taught classroom, which um, uh, the gentleman from Futures just described. And then another class would be, uh, what Rochester schools call uh, a turn, alternative classrooms. I went over this in, in pretty good detail, I think, with the Personnel Committee. Uh, but essentially in the alternative classrooms, we'd have uh, eight to sixteen students who have been identified by staff members and approved by parents to participate in a, in a different kind of arranged uh, class. Uh, we would have a, a teacher who understands alternative childhood experiences, uh, especially approaches to work with kids. A lot of those kids will have discipline problems. Uh, they tend to be hungry. Uh, they might be newer to the community. There's a wide variety of criteria. If they meet that criteria, we would call the parents to see if they're willing to participate. Uh, this model's been extremely successful in Rochester, not just for those kids who are in the alternative classroom, but it's helped the whole system work better. Uh, and uh, so that's why we're very uh, interested in that model. There's a group of us that went down to Rochester, I think in February. And we're really impressed with how uh, George Demanich had set up their elementary school there several years ago. Uh, and this is one of the um, one of the strategies that they used. So again, if we do that, we would not be adding any teachers to this year's uh, K through six um, count. Uh, unless, of course, we add uh, more kindergarten kids. And then, of course, we'd have more kids to, to pay for a ninth teacher. Do you have any questions about that before I move on? If not, I'll uh, uh, we don't have any recommended changes for uh, twin bluff, although Chris Palmetier emailed me reminding me uh, that they do have a lot of kids in the wheel classes, up to thirty-six kids at a time. And that's something that uh, we could and probably should uh, address for this coming year. So I'll talk to him about that in more detail. Uh, we would like to reduce the overloads for math teachers at the high school. Uh, those have been added over the years and and we're hoping to uh, reduce that. We've already talked about the internship coordinator uh, position at a previous meeting. And um, I'm a strong supporter of that additional position, but only if we can pay for it by increasing revenue uh, through our career and technical education uh, programming. So you can read through that again. It's really a summary of what we talked about uh, at a previous workshop session. We can jump to early childhood and special education um, organization. Uh, they're really um, you know, and Futures alluded to this as well. You know, we have over five hundred kids uh, with an IEP. And uh, you know, we have one district-based administrator uh, to work with teachers on serving those kids. And I think that's the primary reason why uh, we've had a lot of people in and out of that position and that impacts the whole system. Uh, we have two options um, that are really, I think, strong. Uh, option number two would be to hire a special supervisor, assistant director or director. You can see the cost estimate there. Uh, one reason this is um, highlighted or at least suggested at this point is that I think we could, you know, find someone either internally or externally, um, because the, the salary for the position would be higher than a, a typical teacher. So we think we can find someone with uh, more experience, uh, more interest in pursuing uh, special education administration, uh, if we uh, do uh, ask for a special ed supervisor. The other option that Futures recommends is also a very good option. It would be to have uh, two special education coordinators. Um, and as Futures said, they suggested one at the elementaries and then one for the secondaries. Uh, that's also a good model. Uh, my only concern about it is that typically coordinators are based on teacher pay. And um, I think we're going to be more likely than not to, to have internal candidates for that. Uh, and so I'm not sure if, if we'd be able to bring in someone with uh, the expertise that we need. A third option that was just brought up recently would be to do option number two with a supervisor, but then provide some administrative assistance support uh, for Sonia and this person. Uh, because right now we have very limited administrative um, support. And so that, that increases the workload for, for Sonia significantly. Also, uh, we're in the middle of a transition uh, with regard to the Colville Director. Uh, Min is retiring, or at least in the process of retiring. And so uh, she would like to scale back significantly at the, the, in January of twenty twenty-one. And as her FPE goes down, uh, then Brittany Cules, uh, or uh, Cule or Keels FTU would go up. And uh, she is not licensed in every area that Min is licensed. And so we'll have a, a preschool coordinator, um, you know, instead of the full uh, family service or the uh, Colville Family Services Director for a period of time. Eventually, though, uh, we want to go back to the model where we have one full-time Colville Director and um, as well as a special ed supervisor or possibly the two coordinators that we talked about. Uh, Sherry, I forgot to include the attachment, so I'm sorry about that. But Sherry did give us a summary of special education teacher allotments for the upcoming school year. And um, right now, the only recommended uh, special education teacher position uh, would be an extra one at the high school. Again, we're reimbursed for about half of that cost. So it's about a forty-two and a half thousand dollar expense. Um, after lots of discussions internally, uh, we think that uh, we'd like to add a part-time school psychologist at the high school as well. And uh, you'll kind of see how that all works here in just a little bit. Uh, the, the report that Futures did, I don't think it was in the PowerPoint presentation, but in their report, it talks about the typical range for uh, case loads for school psychologists. but in their report, it talks about the typical range for case loads for school psychologists, and we're at the upper end of that range. And so we'd like to add one more school psychologist to mix, and we think that would actually help in a lot of different areas, including at the high school. The next item has to do with, it's at the bottom of the page. Yeah, you can keep going Lisa. Sorry, I've been scrolling on my own document and I forget that you're the one in charge of the presentation. A little bit further. Yeah, why don't you go to the next page? There, there's the teacher allotments, and at the bottom, you can see special education transportation monitors. We need more of our education assistance to accept some transportation responsibilities at the beginning, or before school starts and after the school day starts. We only have one or two people who are currently doing it. And first, we need to provide the service because first student does not intend to continue that. With every person we hire, we save money. So it's kind of a win-win-win for everyone if we can find some of our own education assistants to accept that role. You can go on to the next page Lisa? Building administration. First, we'll just go about building by building. I'd like to have Mike become the director of technology in addition to his current duties. I need to talk with him this week again about what that looks like, because it's a significant additional responsibility. In the ideal world, we would have an assistant principal instead of a student support coordinator, because an assistant principal could help the principal with teacher evals and other duties. I do have that as a priority five instead of a priority one or two. But I still highlighted it because I think long-term, that's where we want to go. You can scroll down Lisa, to Burnside. There we go. This has changed a lot largely because of financial constraints that we all understand. So right now, the suggestion is to have the Burnside principal also serve as a Tower View principal to keep our student support coordinator instead of converting that to an assistant principal and instead of adding a dean of students. So if we adjusted that, we're actually decreasing the amount of administrative support at Burnside. We don't want to do that. So the suggestion is to increase the school psychologist's time by a halftime position at a cost of about $26,000. And so you can see the additional cost would be right around 30,000 to 35,000 for doing that work. But we'd be able to provide the Tower View principalship and add a halftime school psychologist for that amount.
So Karsten, this is-
Don't have any here. Go ahead.
One of my questions on that is, so we're in the market for a new elementary principal and you're assigning Tower View principal responsibilities there. Is that a bit of a unicorn position, or is that doable? I guess, could you speak to that combination? I guess I'm just wondering what that looks like in the job market.
We will have a limited pool of candidates. But I'm very confident that we'll be able to find at least one person who would be perfectly suited for it. So I won't know until it's posted, and you know, if we don't have any really strong candidates interested, then we'd have to come back to the drawing board.
I'm just concerned because we've had this position for Tower View. There's been a split focus, and this was several years ago, and it seemed that it was not the ideal combination of oversight for Tower View, so that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, and that's a legitimate concern, because we have had numerous people on that role. I think Stan Slusser was in there, the assistant principal at the middle school, maybe the assistant principal at the high school. And then, you know, worked out really well having Beth Borgan there because she had a district-wide position, so she had extra flexibility. And turns out that she had a passion for, you know, working with Tower View kids, so it's worked really, really well for the past few years. We would definitely have to find the right person for that principalship. And you know, if we don't find the right person, then I do think we'd have to reconsider.
Okay, no good, thank you. Karsten, this is-
No changes. Go ahead.
So when we talk about Sunnyside, and if Mike was taking on being a principal and the director of technology, and then we added an assistant principal so that when he was busy doing other things, somebody could step in. What happens with the Burnside principal when he or she is over at Tower View and there needs to be some administrative support that happens at Burnside when he or she is not there? Is the student support coordinator filling in administratively for that position?
Yes, that would be the plan, is that if the principal's over at Tower View, that the student support coordinator would need to step up to at least take care of things until the principal came back. That's one of the nice things about having the Burnside principal be the Tower View principal, is that it's practically across the street, so there's a short turnaround time to get there. I will say that, you know, for this coming year, I'm not suggesting an assistant principal at Sunnyside either. You know, long-term, I hope that works out, and I think long-term, I hope the same happens at Burnside. It's not as listed as one of the options, you know, for approval this time, but I'm hoping that happens maybe two, three, five years from now. And again, I wish I could come out and say, yes, we're going to have an assistant principal of both sites. But we do have those cost limitations, and so that's why, at least I'm not recommending it right now. Twin Bluff, I just included as just sort of an FYI, there are no recommended changes. So Lisa, you can go to the next page. Red Wing High School, this is also a hurtful recommendation because I've been a very strong advocate for two assistant principals at the high school. I think it's justified, there's no doubt. And again, when you're comparing costs, 140,000 compared to 85,000 for a dean of students or student support coordinator, I had to recommend the less expensive option. So at least then, we would have an extra person on staff who could assist George and Jay with their work in terms of the high school. The latest plan is that this person would send the dean of students or support coordinator for eighth grade to help with the transition. This person may also need to take on some district-wide responsibilities, like district assessment coordination. We'd have to figure out exactly where that lands, but it would probably be with a high school person. And you'll see why that's recommended here in just a little bit. You can go on to the next page Lisa? Teaching and Learning Department. We had to look for some reductions as part of the overall system, and this is where they're coming from. So you can see, you know, Beth Borgan is retiring at the end of this fiscal year. We'd like to replace her with a teaching, director of teaching and learning. We'd also like to eliminate the curriculum coordinator position. And then find others to do some of the work that Beth has been doing. So for example, that's why the Burnside principal would be the Tower View principal as well, because Beth has done that. We'd need someone to take on the district assessment coordination piece. I'm thinking that someone at the high school could take on that role. And of course, the director of teaching and learning would take on all curriculum duties and, you know, other related responsibilities. So you can see that we would save somewhere between 85 and 120,000 by making those changes. And we need to find just the right person to do that work, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to make that work as well. I will note, kind of a really important piece is at the bottom of that page where we talked about teaching and learning coaches. We'd like to convert our positive behavior intervention support coaches, Emily and Kim, to what we call teaching and learning coaches, so that they're not just focused on student discipline. They're focused on working with teachers to further enhance their work. We already have one teaching and learning coach on staff. Not our staff, but he's been hired through a grant through GCED, Dave Kraft is his name. And then we'd like to hire at least one more teaching and learning coach. But this proposal only assumes that if we can pay for that position. So, you know, just by the conversions, we'd have three teaching and learning coaches, and then I'd like to add a fourth if we can pay for it. Any questions or comments about the teaching and learning department?
Yep, this is Pam, I have another question about that. So one of the reasons we added a PBIS coach, or two coaches, was our referendum promise to focus on student behavior and discipline and to make sure that we get a good handle on what's happening in the district. So how would that, how would changing them to a teaching and learning coach, I don't want to lose sight of the promises that we've made about, on our strategic plan and our referendum promises.
Yeah, we promised not only resources towards student discipline, but also towards instructional coaches for teaching and learning. It turns out this past year, we spent a lot more on the student discipline than we did on instructional coaches. And so really, this proposal balances that out. And I, I, I'm very confident to be able to say that it meets our referendum promises. But that's only because we spent a lot more this year on student discipline focus than we did the teaching and learning focus. One thing that might be helpful is the, you know, I could certainly bring up kind of the copy of our referendum promises, you know, at a later meeting, and so we can kind of see how that all shakes out. I think that'd be really helpful.
Yes.
There aren't any more questions, we'll go to the next page?
Ask one here, this is Arlen. Given the presentation we just had on special education expenditures and their concept, one concept that they presented, that we have an assistant director for secondary and a director for primary, I guess is what I'm going to say, how I'm going to say, elementary. I'm trying to think of where we had, I don't know the statistics, how much of our behavioral issues were at Burnside. But I'm wondering if, if I'm thinking things through right, many of those with behavioral issues were on IEP. So I'm wondering if the behavioral address, issues would be addressed better by taking a good hard look at this model that was presented by Futures before we jump into this. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, the, we did have some issues with our special education kids. But unfortunately, many of the discipline problems at Burnside this year have been our general education kids. And so, you know, looking at the data, it was really clear that there were some gen ed kids just with significant behavioral problems. So to respond to that, that's why we went to St. Cloud, that's why we went to Rochester, to kind of see what they were doing differently. And that's the, that's the reason we came up with the alternative classrooms for the general ed kids, one for each grade, so that we could better serve those kids in a smaller setting with more supports that they need. So that's really going to be the big game changer, I think, in terms of student discipline, would be our focus on alternative classrooms. I think our special education resources could be implemented more effectively with a co-teaching. And then certainly, some extra school psychologist's time would help us put it all together as far as the MTSS or the multi-tiered system of supports that Future talks about, the school psychologist would be essentially running that show, and that would help with academics and discipline. Yeah, that's one of the things this year that was really changed. Some people would say fallen apart, some people would say changed. And that is, you know, how MTSS was being implemented. It was, it was done for good reasons, I get it, but it was, it was really kind of all over the map and it wasn't really systemized and formalized. If we have one person, a school psychologist, kind of responsible for that, I think that part would be much better. Did that kind of answer your question, Arlen?
Well, I guess it does address it if they were general ed students. However, I'm almost wondering if we have that many behavioral issues with general ed students, why weren't they on an IEP or something? It sounds to me like there's more to it than, if there's that much of a behavioral issue with some of these, so I'll... And I'm just thinking that if we had more help on the, on, consider that idea a little bit more, maybe we would address things at an earlier stage and not have them follow through into high school.
Yeah, I do agree with you that if we can address those issues earlier rather than later, it's going to be better for the whole system. One thing I'll point out, and you know, this isn't like being formally proposed, but one option would be to have one of the teaching and learning coaches essentially become the coach for the alternative classrooms as well as the co-taught classrooms. So, you know, we could have one of those coaches serve in that capacity, and that could help address some of the things that you're talking about, Arlen. Essentially be a coach for the special ed teachers and the alternative classroom teachers.
Hallie, did you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to Arlen, because Arlen's question is right. You know, thinking of, okay, if kids are having troubles, wouldn't they, you know, need an IEP? However, Karsten, I mean, however, Arlen, you have to go through some legal steps in order to, in order for a student to qualify. So if we don't have those things in place for teachers to be actually, to utilize and implement those steps, we can't go from A to Z. And the goal is to keep kids out of special education with interventions. But when they were explaining it in that Futures presentation, we didn't have the interventions in place from a general ed perspective, to make sure that kids were getting what they needed. And then it all just kind of blew up. Nobody knew who was doing what. And so, yes, some kids might have needed an IEP, but for sure, the kids needed more support that was streamlined to their specific needs, and we didn't have that organized. And that's what Karsten is saying is happening across all buildings, is that we're not organized enough in our interventions.
I agree with, with Hallie.
Yeah, I was just trying to help Arlen, kind of. Does that make sense, Arlen?
Oh, it makes sense, I guess. I understand that, but maybe, in the end, we're trying to do interventions without an IEP is basically what you're saying, so certainly not all up to speed, but-
But if I, if I can explain that part-
The line is we're trying to need some intervention whether, and we're just trying to do it without an IEP. That's what we're trying to do with this alternative class in the way it sounds, so.
Sort of, but we have to do the interventions before a student could ever qualify for an IEP. But if they're not organized enough, or there's not enough staff to implement, that's where we fall short.
I guess I'm not really qualified-
Any other question?
Other, I'll follow the lead on it, I'm just raising some questions.
I got a question. Madam Chair?
Jim can go first, that's fine.
I'm just, just a couple of questions here. Are you telling us that a full-time business manager would cost us 85,000 more than we're currently paying?
Yeah, that's sort of in the next, the next segment.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of you because the screen's up there. I thought you were coordinated it all. I'll, I'll wait till this.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. Sorry. Um, just to address Arlen's thing, because I think we have covered it a lot at Personnel because I've had those same questions, Arlen of, you know, if a child is showing disruptive behavior, how that, you know, can't be defined as a special ed. But evidently, you know, it's not necessarily a disability or deficiency. I mean, that's where adverse trauma and different things are coming in. And that home life isn't necessarily what it should be. So I just kind of wanted to add that because I've had, you know, I've asked some of those same questions of, you know, if a child's misbehaving that much, why they aren't on an I E P? But I want to ask Carson, are we, you know, we just got done with a presentation that talks so much about how our M T S S system is not working and needs to be implemented much better. So like, where is that going to come into place with this? Is that, I mean, I know Jess probably be excellent at that. But I don't know if that was actually described in the duties here. And I think that that's true, that we need to have these in, you know, in the job description so that now M T S S becomes a very important thing that we're talking about all the time. And I don't know if that's in the principles too, or can you kind of address where, how we're going to make that be more of a focused goal? Or maybe, and I don't mean to jump to the conclusion that M T S S is the one that you guys are going to choose to, to do all the time because maybe the co-teaching is something more that we need to focus on. But if M T S S was going to be something that was a goal, where would that fit in?
Yeah, my initial response is that, and you know, Sherry, you know, might add some as well. But my initial response is that adding one school psychologist would have the biggest impact. Because, you know, right now, I think Sunnyside Elementary is, is running that process really well. And I think it's in part because Molly Paulson's our school psychologist there. She's full-time, essentially full-time, and she runs that process. So at Burnside, it's sort of different people doing different parts of the process, and it hasn't gone well, unfortunately. But if we add a halftime school psychologist there, then that person could essentially own the M T S S process and serve as the link, you know, between our teachers and G C E D. Also adding some more administrative support, I think, would also bolster that possibility.
And I get, and sorry to continue on that, but I get that if we add more hours to a psychologist that that will probably free up other time from administrators who maybe have that greater skill. But tell me why a psychologist would know how to implement M T S S better than some other administrator?
Well, in Sherry, if you're still on the call, maybe you can jump in. But I would argue that, that I don't think the, the principal should be running the, the M T S S process. And I'll use Burnside as an example. You know, the principal's in charge of overall management and leadership in school. And so that's what the principal should be doing. Caleb Bell, as a student support coordinator, is already responsible for a lot of the student discipline and what happens in the lunchroom and on recess, you know, so she needs to be focused on that. And what they did this year in Burnside, they had, I think, three different teams. And it was a very complicated process. And again, I think it was done for good reasons. It, you know, good people were involved, but it just kind of fell apart from there. None of the principal or the student coordinator should be responsible. I think it should be trained for and Sherry, if you're, if you're on the call, could you please recommend or add to it?
Sure. What we've seen at Sunnyside, there's Molly being there. Molly also serves problems, but she is predominantly at Sunnyside. She's able to lead all of those intervention teams. And with one person leading them, she can be closer to the teachers, know what supports they need for data collection or implementing interventions with fidelity. Having done that, well, she's kind of an integral part of that team. So Mike can call on her. She goes and models interventions for the teacher, and it, it just brings a consistency to the system. The other piece to it, our psychs for the last two years have been working with the University of Minnesota on just this topic to better implement this across districts. So they're all poised to really be that support to the administration in the districts.
Okay, that helps. Thanks. Because I guess, you know, as I just generally think of a psychologist more in the mental health, you know, sphere, which I get is part of probably why different interventions have to be used. But I guess I just wanted that clarified because I get, maybe obviously psychologists have a broader view than, than I've been thinking they have had. So thank you. That's good.
Can we jump to the business department now? All right. So anyway, this is the analysis of the options for the business department. I know it's been an issue for a few years. And I'll answer Jim's question right away. There's a anticipated increase of about eighty-five thousand dollars if my eyesight is good enough to see. That is based on some assumptions, including that we would pay a full-time business manager approximately the same as what we'd been paying Brad a few years ago, plus some inflationary increases. It also compares that salary with other Big Nine business managers. You know, so obviously, if we hired someone, let's say thirty or forty thousand dollars less, then, then we'd subtract that from the estimated increase.
Have you, have we, okay, go ahead. I'll let you finish, and then I may have another question, I guess.
Oh, no, you go, go ahead, Jim. I, I think I'm, I'm done just talking about those.
Has the personnel or anybody, have you looked at a finance person instead of a manager? Because you have in the district office, looking at this, you have yourself, Director of Administrative Services. You have quite a bit of supervision already. Have we just ever looked at, because the dollars are tight, you're going to hear from the Finance Committee next meeting as to, Heidi brought up this from the M S B, the projections. But I'm just saying, have we ever looked at just person to do the finances? Because Jackie does a tremendous job. But she's only twenty hours, and we're paying her seventy-four, seventy-five dollars an hour for that contract. Have we ever just considered since financial employee? Get it gaining that four, six hundred and twenty-four hours extra that we are not getting now?
Yeah, well, first, I just want to clarify, you know, we have the part-time business manager and then a human resources coordinator, you know, as well as a payroll coordinator, and then some student management support. We do not have a Director of Administrative Services. That was just one of the options that was thrown in there. I know that, you know, Jackie provides the high-level support for business management. Not only in terms of projections and revenues and expenditures, you know, all that. She also provides some H R support as well as part of that. And so I think we're, we're getting a, a really good deal for what we're paying Jackie and Amy to provide that service. You can always kind of shift who does how much, you know, and maybe even save more or maybe spend a little bit more. You know, but I, I, I just think it's a really cost-effective method, you know, right now that we're doing. I will, I gotta throw in one, and that's option four. And it's not being recommended. Don't get me wrong. But Arlen and I both happened to go to a workshop during the School Board Convention. And I didn't even know he was here. I sat in front, he sat in the back, and he, he just happened to come in. But I think we were both incredibly impressed with what St. Michael, Albertville had done. They took a slightly different approach and hired a Director of Administrative Services who would oversee all the investigations, human resources, human rights complaints, you know, all that. In St. Michael, you know, they had a person who was trained as an attorney, and so they were able to save some legal costs based on that. If I could have an extra hundred thousand bucks, hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks in the, the district office, that's probably the option I'd go for, you know, over any of the others. You know, I would love to have, you know, more business office support. If we could have Jackie full-time, that would be a dream come true. You know, she, you know, she has a non-compete clause. That wouldn't be an option. And I think we'd lose a lot moving away from Jackie.
But I just think you've
Yeah, I just saw a message. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a I wish we had had the organizational chart with all this, and then we can get that later. That's not, that's not a big deal. I just think you're spread so thin, trying to do all these little, all these things. You don't have anybody underneath you to actually do some of these things that you are trying to do. And you're being pulled in all kinds of directions. And I guess that's really where I thought we were going to eventually get to. Now the dollars have changed. I get that. But the end of the day is, I think the dollars that we're allocating in some of these positions to are a little on, on the higher end. And I don't know why we always have, have to think we have to spend a lot more than what we are possibly out there without actually looking into what we're going to do. So I just share that. I just think you're spread all around the board. Nobody there to, you can put things on to, to do, lessen your load because I think you have been known to say that you're, you're in charge of supervising too many people now. So how can we get you more help? And with a better dollar amount, I, I was looking for that, and I didn't see that here. So.
Sure. Yeah, this is maintaining a bare bones business audit department. There's no doubt about it. And you know, kicked around some other options like having a Director of Human Resources instead of a coordinator and Administrative Services, that kind of thing. I wish we could do something that would, you know, provide more support in that area, but it, it's just, it's hard to hard to recommend it, you know, considering the financial circumstances. I will say though, that Jimmy Wright, you know, a lot of these assumed costs, you know, they're truly estimates. And it all depends on, you know, if you'd hire a full-time business manager. You know, it could be, could be less than that, you know, if we wanted to go that way. I think the same is true in some of the other estimates as well. Like for the Director of Teaching and Learning, I sort of took a mid-range level. If we hire someone with not as much experience, then it would be less than that. So I didn't want out of lowball the cost estimates, you know, especially in the tight, well, I never lowball cost estimates. That's just not the right
I, I just think we're need to, with the things changing, all that, have to look at many different things now because you're going to hear pretty soon here in the next meeting that we're projecting, estimating the dollars are going to be even less than what we hope for. And so this is what, what, I mean, we're always locked onto a, I'm just not trying to pick on, but the business manager, how about a business financial person? Not a manager. I mean, that could keep your cost. I'm just asking that you consider those things as we go forward down the road. So. Hi, Mike.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think we got a, everybody in this district is patching things together and trying to make all these things work with, with the little money that we have and the less that we're probably going to be getting. And I think that might have a little bit to do with why I think we might be having more difficulty because we're constantly giving people pieces of things to do rather than having a dedicated staff member to do the entire coordinating of what needs to be done. And I, I'm being general because I don't know everything about these things. But, you know, having the having Mike Pagel be the principal and the technology person, and and it's always just a little something put on. And I, I was looking back at the, you know, not on there, but you know, it was ninety-five thousand dollars or something for, for curriculum coordinator or something, and then we're going to get rid of that. So who's, who's going to be doing that? And what does, what does it mean to have a coordinated curriculum? What, what do they work on? And how do you patch that over to somebody in a, in a two tenths, two eights of a job, or however you measure it? It's just, we're, we're always patching stuff together. And we don't have enough money to do, to do the job right. And, and we're not going to be getting more money to be doing it right. So we have, we try to do it as best we can. And so we end up with things like this. I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but it's, that's just the way it is. It's, there's not nearly enough money to educate students the way that they should be educated. And then there's all kinds of demands put on the people who are doing the educating that don't necessarily have a lot to do with with instilling curiosity in the students and, and making the students want to learn. But yeah, it's, it's not an exciting time to be on the school board. That's for sure. That's enough.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one, Carson.
Lisa, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I know you have one more piece, the buildings, grounds, and technology. Do you want to do that first before we really dive into more specifics?
Sure. Yeah, the next few will go real quickly. So Lisa, if you can go to the next page. This one, we've already approved. So there's only a five thousand dollar increase in costs. And so, you know, we don't need to spend much time on that, but I, I wanted to include it just so that people know the plans. Please, you can go to the next page. Here are some other really good ideas, actually, but right now they're, they're not, most of them are not being recommended. The top one there, Credit Recovery and Targeted Services Coordinator would be really nice to have, especially if we could team it with the Principal of Tower View. But again, the extra cost, I just couldn't prioritize it better than that. Another really good possibility, in fact, it's a priority three, is a Director of Communications. I estimate that cost would be eighty thousand dollars. Plus, we'd reduce some of our reliance on some outside consultants. So we could save probably another fifteen or twenty thousand. There's a strong argument to be had that we should really push for this position. Right now, I, I didn't put it as one of, you know, priority one or two, you know, at this time. Emergency and our first call subs. This is different than what we currently have. It's in place of. Right now, we have four emergency subs, and my thinking now is that we would reduce it to three people who could be emergency subs and our first call subs. Emergency subs, you know, essentially show up at the building, and if we don't have a sub for a teacher or paraprofessional, that person fills a gap. First call sub would be someone who is called in advance. And so would be assigned, you know, to be a substitute, you know, before the day starts. And so there's some cost differences with both. And I'm thinking that with COVID, there, you know, the substitute pool might be significantly different. And so I'd like to have some flexibility as the school year starts to make sure we have emergency subs in place, but maybe two, you know, maybe two or three of them could become first call subs. That'd be significantly cheaper. So. And then the last one, you know, just because it's listed last doesn't mean it's, it's a poor idea. But I, I do want to keep on the radar, you know, the possibility of having a middle school police liaison officer in the future. And so I do have that in line. So that's kind of the, the gist of where we are right now. But yeah, if there are more questions or comments, please feel free.
So this is Pam, and I'm going to ask a question on page one. When we move to a different system with our classroom teachers, right now, how many general ed paras do we have that we have hired? And, and along with that is, if we go to this hybrid, how does, how does the para world work with that new system? I mean, do we have the same I mean, do we have the same need for the, for as many general ed pairs as we have? Or would they be switched into some other role? How, how does that play in here?
Yeah, I can tell you, um, we're planning to, to pattern ourselves after Rochester's plan in terms of those alternative classrooms and co-talk classrooms. What they do in Rochester is, um, if it's a co-talk classroom, they'll be the general ed teacher. Uh, there will be a special ed teacher in the classroom half the time because that person would serve two different classrooms. Uh, and then there would be a full-time, uh, education assistant. In a co-talk classroom, it would probably be, well, it would be a special education assistant. So there'd be three adults in there or two adults the, the full day and then, you know, half of a special ed teacher. Uh, for the alternative classroom, uh, again, we limit that to no more than sixteen. Maybe in Red Wing, it would be somewhere between twelve and fourteen, you know, right around there. Uh, but we would have a, a general education classroom teacher as well as a full-time, uh, education assistant. And so, you know, that classroom would have more support because the kids, uh, face more challenging circumstances and so would warrant that. Uh, in terms of other education assistance, uh, throughout the elementary schools, you know, we know we need education assistance course for title one and, you know, we need to make sure we have enough supervision, you know, throughout like in recess and lunchrooms and those kinds of things. Uh, what I'd like to do with the admin team is really focus on those needs over the next two or three weeks. And, uh, really identify exactly what's needed uh, in terms of hours per day, the number of, uh, education assistance and that kind of thing. So I don't have a definitive plan, you know, right now, but, um, that focus, you know, will become apparent over the next two or three weeks.
Thank you. So I imagine things might be a little bit different in this new model. Is, is what I'm, I'm hearing and that might generate either more or less cost based on that new model. I'm, I'm thinking maybe a little savings, maybe?
Yeah, it will not cost more, um, you know, and, uh, you know, I need to, to better understand exactly what each education assistant is doing, if it's general ed or special education. And, uh, you know, make sure that we have the appropriate level. And, um, so there, there may be some reductions in those areas. Uh, but I need some, some time to really determine exactly what we can and should do.
Thank you. Any other questions for this plan?
This is, this is Arlen here. I wanted to go back to the business department and just make the comment Carson alluded to that I was in on that session, uh, director of administrative services with a law background. Uh, to me, made a lot of sense and would handle basically the whole business side of our school district to free up Carson to work on the educational side of it. Um, uh, it's a lot of money. I'm not saying we should do it. And it'd be critical to be able to find the right person, but I think if we did go that route and we got the right person, that person could set up a lot of this other stuff in the future to be in a much more efficient and, and, uh, logical way of working all the way through from human resources, uh, or, um, building and grounds, technology and everything else. I have a lot of concerns with this whole technology plan. I'm try, trying to grasp this idea of Sunnyside Principal being technology director because I thought we just handled some of that technology with what we already approved. So, um, I'm gonna leave it at that. I don't have the answers, but, uh, I do think that con- concept of a director of administrative services with a law background could go a long way to handle our contracts and everything, interpreting what they actually say. I, I think things would flow very well, but it's a lot of money and I realize that.
There you have it.
Oh, Janie just asked a question about, you know, why would Mr. Pagel be the, the choice for uh, being the technology person? Uh, really out of the, the whole administrative team, he has by far the strongest technology background. Uh, he does not know, at least I don't think he does, the ins and outs as far work configurations or, you know, these really technical things with servers or networks. Uh, but he really gets instructional or, um, yeah, technology instruction. He served in that capacity when he was in the elementary school. Uh, and it's clear from all of our discussion that he gets it. So out of the whole admin team, I think he's by far the best situated for it. Um, a lot of schools are, so he has a full-time director of technology. Uh, but again, that's just something, um, we can't afford at this time. Mike would do an outstanding job, no doubt.
And thanks. I think I just, that wanted that to be highly excited. I thought that was the case. I just thought it makes more, you know, it obviously makes sense for an educator that is in a building, was, is using technology every day to do it. Nothing against Kevin, but like, I just think it, you know, to me, this makes actually a little bit more sense than having a, the, the kind of bones person, the framework person being the technology specialist. So. Thank you though.
I do think it is worth, um, thinking about, I mean, and, and I know that you've been giving a lot of thought and time to this human resources plan, but I really do. And we've said this in the personnel committee a number of times and Arlen and I have also mentioned it to you, Carson, a number of times that, you know, now is really if we're gonna shake things up and, and reconfigure a lot of different positions, really now is your opportunity to, to maybe make a big ask. I know we've got some financial parameters that we are working around, of course, but I think that we're also having to think about efficiency. Um, we have to think about customer service. Um, and thinking about our students and our families as, as our consumers and um, we wanna be able to put out the very best product that we can. Um, and so I, I really do want to encourage you to think about and ask for the big ask. The most, you know, the worst thing that's gonna happen is we're gonna say no, go back to the drawing board. But I really do think you need to shoot for the moon here and, and thinking about, um, efficiency and putting out the best product and making sure that, that we're meeting the needs of every kid. And if that means taking away some of the day-to-day things that bog you down because you can't get to student achievement. I mean, we need to also be thinking about our student achievement, the numbers, um, that we've been given, the data that we've been given about student achievement. And I know that you're not able to address a lot of those things because you're working with contracts. And, and I know you love that, but we've also talked about if you, we've, if we had an assistant supervisor or superintendent, um, that could assist you in doing a huge portion of your job that would free you up to do other portions of your job as a leader of the district. So I'm just, I've said enough, but I just really want you to think about the big ask and um, how we could maybe be more efficient with the products that we're putting out.
And actually, it's a good segue. Um, Lisa, could you, um, bump or go to the document, I think it's called human resources summary with a date? While she's doing that, um, what I did is I took what I just showed and put it into a spreadsheet, uh, by priority. And so I think it kind of gets back to where you're coming from Pam as far as cost. I do tend to, um, I, uh, consider myself a fiscal conservative and so I'm, you know, I wanna make the budget work. And, um, you know, but I, hopefully these different priorities will kind of give us some ideas to, to consider.
Can you, uh, make it a little bigger so we can read it? I'm squinting as best I can, but I'm not quite seeing it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. So here, um, if we did all of the priority ones, uh, the total cost would be about sixty-five thousand dollars. Of course, that's assuming the savings in the teaching and learning department. If we did the priority two projects, that's another hundred and fifty-five thousand plus any costs of additional teaching and learning coaches. And so, uh, priority ones and twos would be, you know, over two hundred thousand, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you really wanna get a customer service, then the director of communications, I think, would be a big player in that. Although there could be arguments for other things too.
So Carson, this is Heidi. Um, and the rest of the board, we had a finance committee meeting before this. And, um, I'm just wondering if this is within our budget because although I, we believe now that we will retain the two percent that were, uh, that was decided at the state starting July one, some of the scenarios we looked at was a one percent for the next biennium uh, for each of the two years. And then I asked if we run a zero percent, that we're not going to get an increase in state aid from the state. And our referendum promises, our model, financial model assumed a two percent each year for state aid. So I guess I'm trying to meld the grim future with what I would love to do here at the district. And I, I'd like to hear how we're going to do this balancing act. So Carson, if you could kind of assess if we're adding, um, over two hundred thousand dollars to our budget with priority ones and twos, what else do we need to do to make this float? Cause I, I'm wondering if we can afford to do this now. And I, I like a lot of the careful planning that's gone into this. A lot of conversations been had, I'm sure, and I'm trying to remain student-centered. Um, but I'm wondering, I'm just a little, little cautious here about what we might be facing ahead.
Yeah, I think there are a few things that we really, uh, need to do for sure. Uh, for example, the, um, extra, uh, special education teacher at the high school. I think the caseloads, um, are, you know, right on. So that's something we need to do.
Yeah.
Um, I do think that, um, an argument, a strong argu- argument can be made for another school psychologist. Uh, and then, you know, really the other thing, we have to do something to, to, to replace Beth, you know, as she leaves.
Right.
Uh, some of the other, you know, can wait. And so I tried to set it up so that, you know, if, um, you know, cause it's kind of a, we have to come to, we have an intersection. It's a Venn diagram. We have the needs and then we have financial constraints. And somehow we're gonna have to find that balance, you know, the common area.
Right.
And, um, you know, I can certainly come up with proposals, um, or a recommendation and then, you know, the board can whittle it back or we can do it in reverse, you know, either way. Uh, but I tried to structure it, uh, by priority level. Uh, the first priority is typically, uh, based on, you know, direct student needs, you know, teachers, school psychologists, you know, those kinds of things.
Right.
Uh, and then priority two would be, you know, more of the administrative stuff, like the additional, uh, dean of students at the high school. Um, you know, and special education administration, both critical roles. Those are probably two of my top priorities. But I tried to structure it that way. So the thinking, to answer your question, if, if we have maybe two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand in additional expenses recommended, then, um, if the board was agreeable to it, I would probably try to come back with savings somewhere between one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and seventy-five. And then the board could decide if, if the extra, you know, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars was worth it or not. But cuts are cuts, you know?
With the full two hundred and fifty thousand and, and possibilities of savings, just to be honest.
Yeah. And, you know, again, we can have priorities in terms of, um, you know, expenditure reductions as well.
And I guess that's the flip side of this. I'm not opposed to anything that's, that's presented here tonight. I really respect. I'm sure there was tons of hours of, uh, conversation with administrators, um, and input and, um, personnel committee meetings. Um, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, where's the balancing act part of it on, on the other side? Cause I just, is this, is this within our two percent increase for the coming year?
I do not believe this was included in any of the financial estimates that the finance committee looked at.
Okay.
Is that your question, Heidi?
Yeah, well, not quite, but that would help. And then, um, yeah, I just wanna assess, you know, is this within what we thought, if we, if we think pretty sure that we're gonna get that two percent, are these costs contained within that increase or are they just being absorbed by increases in contracts or something? Uh, these are positions that we're adding. So, oh, Jackie says she has some information to share.
Yeah, Pam, are you okay? Uh, Jackie shared some of the, the graphs that she, uh, shared with finance committee earlier?
She said she'll do them after you're done presenting, Carson.
Okay, all right. Uh, yeah, and, uh, one thing Heidi, uh, administrators and I are fully aware of our financial circumstances. You know, we totally get it.
Yeah.
So I viewed our task as, you know, what would we need to really implement the educational plan really well?
Mm-hmm.
So, and we think that this is by far the majority of what we would need to do. Um, but we realize that when you have a pandemic and, uh, incredibly changing financial circumstances at the state, that some things may need to wait, you know, and, uh, we get that. Um, and uh, so that's gonna be the balancing act. And, uh, you know, I, what I would probably do to kind of answer both of your questions for both you and, and Janie would be, you know, this is kind of the, the initial proposal, uh, for cost increases. And then I could certainly come up with an initial proposal on, on how to pay for it. You know, dollar for dollar or whatever, uh, the limits that the board may put on. So, you know, we can certainly address that and then kind of go from there.
I, I just wanna be able to, to, to articulate this correctly and I'm not trying to sidetrack anything. Um, and actually I'm, from my perspective, I'm not doing this job anymore after, you know, January twenty twenty-one. But so I'm looking more long-term. Um, and so, okay, you know, so we go ahead with this. Um, and then, you know, with, um, a financial forecast in November, you know, it could seriously change the state's mind about, you know, we're not going to recover tax revenues like we had expected because business isn't recovering. Um, there needs to be more help shifted across the state budget to other areas to get a handle on COVID. Um, so I, I guess, um, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I'm not opposed to anything. We don't need to make a decision tonight. Um, but what are the next steps on the timeline for making these decisions, Carson?
Well, uh, one thing I'd like to do sooner rather than later is to, uh, post, uh, for the Burnside Principal position. Uh, because we know we need a principal there and, um, it's a big decision. Uh, and I'd really like to do that as soon as possible because we have to find the right person. And, uh, you know, preferably before the end of the school year. So I'd like to post that with perhaps a note just saying that, that, um, principalship of the Tower View Alternative Learning Center may be included, you know, as part of that responsibility, just to be open and honest with any applicants. Uh, the next big thing would be, oh, go ahead.
Oh, so you wanna do this like this week? We don't need a board vote on this like next Monday?
You know, we could go either way, um, you know, because any, uh, final decision would happen after the board meeting on Monday.
Right, okay.
So I could either post it now or I could post it right after the board meeting. You know, I just wanna, I wanna get it, you know, post it as soon as possible so I can see the applicant.
Right, that's why I'm asking, because we're at May first here. So, yeah, I know we need to.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what I was thinking. So that's what I was thinking is that at least I would post it. Uh, if for some reason, you know, um, that whole structure was derailed, then. You know, I just need to tell the applicants that, that it didn't work out this night. You know, I'll be shocked if. If we don't, you know, replay any with, uh, with the principal.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
And next then?
Uh, the other, um, position that we should really figure out is teaching and learning. Um, obviously if we did those things, um. You know, if we eliminated the curriculum coordinator position and we did not replace Beth as a director of support services, we're actually saving money. Uh, with that model, uh, there are legitimate concerns about, you know, can that person do all the work that's necessary? Or do we need a curriculum coordinator? Do we need a full-time technology coordinator? Is there something else? Uh, but I do need, I do know that we need a director of that department. And so my thinking is. You know, I could pulse for that position now and just see. Um, you know, what we could land, uh, there. Again, if we decide not to have a director of teaching and learning, then. Then, um, you know, I just wouldn't offer, you know, no one would be hired until we knew for sure that was the plan. And then another thing I need to do is, is get the director of buildings and grounds hired. Um. And, uh, so I'll, I'll be posting that for sure, uh, because we already approved that position and I'm confident we'll get a, a very good candidate there as well.
Okay, so will this be on the agenda for next Monday? Um, and then we'll.
Yep, this will be on the agenda. Possible reductions will also be considered, uh, at the same time. And, uh, again, um, you know, some of these things we may decide, yes, let's go for it. But let's make sure that we're gonna be in session in the fall.
Right, yeah.
Now regardless of what we do, I'd like some flexibility as far as a rollout. Um, and I'll, I'll give you an example. Um. Let's say we hire, uh, an internal candidate for the director of buildings and grounds. Um, you know, then. We may or may not replace that person. Uh, this summer or this fall, we may wait to see when we're gonna enter school buildings again. You know, that's one, that's one example. Uh, and you could do that for almost every, uh, new hire that we make. If we make an internal change. Then we may or may not replace that person, um, that person's current position. You know, it all depends on the positions. So I would hope that you would at least authorize some additional. Um. Or we'd make some additional decisions, uh, a week from tonight. And then we can wait on some of the stuff. You know, we don't have to hire dean of students right away at the high school. I hope we do because it's a really important position. Uh, but we can wait on some of this stuff as long as we kind of know, uh, what the queue looks like in terms of making decisions in the future.
Okay, thank you. You've given me a lot of good answers.
I just wish I had one answer. I really do. So I wish we had one answer.
Lisa? If you want to stop sharing, I'll bring my graphs up.
It started Jackie. I, I need a, a drink of water and then I'll be back.
Sounds good. Alright, can you all see the graph on my screen? It's kind of busy.
There we go.
Yep.
There we go. Okay, so I'm gonna, as I click on the line, it'll come forward a little bit for you. So this, this brown line, this is where we ended. Or where we're projected to end this school year, somewhere around three point two million dollars in fund balance. Our fund balance goal is five percent in this new system I'm using. I, I haven't figured out a way to graph it yet, but it's somewhere around this two million dollar line. So just to give you some perspective. Um, so, um, the, the light, this brown line here, this is if we continued with our current staff. At a two percent aid increases for the next five years. Um, where we would be. So our end of our referendum is right here in twenty twenty-four, which is why you kind of see the drop off there. Um, this was where the finance committee discussed this winter, doing some staged reductions, um, starting with twenty twenty-one. So that we ended kind of back where we started, back around the, the three million dollar line. So we go up for a while and we come back down. Uh, the one we discussed in finance committee tonight was the one percent, one percent for the next four years. So two percent next year and then one percent aid. Increases for the four years after that. That, that is this kind of tan colored line here. You can see we fall quite a bit faster. Um. The other lines in here are different priority levels and as you. As you can imagine, the more priority levels we add, the quicker this declines. For twenty twenty-one though, I mean, we could do all of them and still increase our fund balance. The problem is the tails. And if you talk to anyone in, um, school finance, anyone in budgeting. You can add things in one year. It's how it impacts your budget for the years to come. So I mean, we could add things next year. It's just when do we want to react to it? We want to react to it. Right away next year, which is, which could be a plan. Do we want to react to it in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? The, the, you take to react to it, the bigger your reaction's gonna have to be. And, um, so that, that's what we're seeing here is as, the longer we wait, the more impact these are having. So that if we did all six priorities, that's this blue line down here. And the priorities are still figuring at two percent. For the entire five-year plan, which we don't think we're gonna get anymore, at least for the next biennium. Um, you can see adding all six priorities, um, we go down pretty fast. Even at two percent increases. With no corresponding reductions.
And that's maintaining, uh, uh, student population? Or is it?
Um, that goes with our enrollment assumptions we did in November. We're very slightly declining.
Okay.
Jackie, did you change the estimates for, uh, employee settlements or not?
Uh, what we would, had assumed in our five-year plan.
It stayed the same?
It stayed the same.
And I don't believe we're going to retain two percent in the next biennium at a minimum. So these charts would be, all be a little grimmer if we don't get two percent.
Correct.
If we fall at zero or one.
And if, and if we don't get two, two percent for a few years. That's gonna put the future that much further behind.
Right.
Right.
And, um. It's what do you want to invest in? As a state, as a nation? You want to invest in your capital, your most valuable capital is your, your people, but.
Right.
But, uh. That doesn't always happen, does it?
Nobody, nobody saw this COVID nineteen coming and the effects it's gonna have on us for sometime down the road.
No, but it's all a part and parcel of the same thing, uh. You know, the, the supply chain shortening up. So you've got. Uh, you know, just-in-time delivery for everything. Well, when you need a whole lot of stuff. You're out of time. And it, it's just a buildup. It's not any one thing. It's everything all together and.
Right.
But if it hadn't come, we would probably still been looking at two, 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 not talking about one, one or zero, zero. So it did have effect on everybody and. And like we said at the finance committee, the, uh. Small, the economy is struggling. It's gonna struggle for quite a while. We all hope it comes back. But reality is, it's probably not going to be what it was with all the small businesses that are not going to be around. And those are the ones that help pay the property tax to help fund their school, so.
Yeah.
And employ people.
And employ people, exactly. And everything else. So, yeah, we're not, you know, it's. Like I said, the.
And I guess to the rest, no, to the rest of the board, the finance committee. Made the recommendation that you should all review some of the materials we saw this afternoon so that you're fully aware of the realities and. And, uh, Jay, Jackie's giving you a pretty good, um. Thorough preview at, at this time, but you'll need more time to look at it and consider. And so, um. If we can start sharing out those materials on Wednesday for the board packet, I urge people to read it sooner rather than later so you can ask some questions. And we can all get some answers, um, at the meeting next Monday.
Right.
That's all I have for today.
That is at the end?
So what?
Any other?
I was gonna say, so what I hear you saying is that, uh, we have some time to digest some things. Um, between now and Monday for our next board meeting, but you are gonna post for a couple of positions. Uh, because we really, we can't wait on some of those things.
Right.
Yeah, I'll post them and then, you know, there won't be any recommendations for hire until after the board meetings. So, you know, if we did. If something comes up and, you know, we decide not to pursue one of those options, we'll, we'll have the time not to, not to do the hiring.
Okay. Just so we're clear on what the next steps are.
Yep.
Any other questions that we have on the human resources? Plan there? Okay. Anything else, Carson, before we, uh, move on?
I think that's it for now, but we'll see you in a week or so.
Okay, well, this has been a long night. We've got a lot to process, so, um, I'm sure we'll all be swirling with information, but. Just reach out to each other as you have questions, concerns, um, write them down so you don't lose them. Um, because we do have a lot to think about and make decisions for, so, um. Definitely keep a running log of your concerns, questions, comments, um. And with that, I will, uh. Uh, take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Jim.
By Mike, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, roll the call votes. Arlen?
Hi.
Uh, Janie?
Hi.
Holly?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Jim?
No, hi.
You're both guys, so that's, uh, seven, zero. Uh, so I will, uh, adjourn the meeting. It's, uh, nine oh four.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Have a good week.
Sleep well.